It is 9:04 and time to call this meeting of the San Angelo City Council to order. We will begin this morning with the prayer. Mr. Ed Lopez, would you please step forward? Ed's with the River City Baptist Church. Please stand as you are able while Ed opens us in prayer.
Good morning. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you on this beautiful day, Lord, to thank you, Father, for the blessing of just being alive and to wake up to a cloudy sky, Father. And with those clouds above us, Father, we ask thee that, Father, you grant us some rain for our land. And that, Father, may you send us that special blessing. May you be with our mayor, our council, our city manager, and our city staff. May you give them wisdom from above to lead our city in what is best for all. And, Father God, we place the agenda today in your hands, and may your will be done always. And, Father God, we ask thee now, may you continue to bless our great nation, our state, and especially our home, the city of San Angelo. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ed. Ms. Essence Edwards, would you please come forward and help me with the pledge?
Good morning. How are you? Let's get right here and we'll do the American first. You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
And she did not miss one word on either one of those. Thank you so much, Essence. We do have some proclamations. I see Ms. Herbert is here. Come forward if you would please, Mary Herbert. This next one will be on the West Texas Hunger Summit. And do you want to come forward too, Ms. Teslin, or you're just going to let her do it? Okay. This first one is the West Texas Hunger Summit, and I would like to read this. Good morning. The Texas Hunger Initiative is a collaborative effort both locally and statewide, whose goal is to end hunger in Texas through policy, education, research, grassroots organizing, and community development. San Angelo is one of 12 Texas cities selected as a regional office to recruit and train community partners who will provide more access points for eligible residents to apply for Texas benefits, including the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, CHIP, TANF, and Medicaid. The Kids Eat Free Summer Meal Program was established to support the needs to relieve hunger during the summer months because more than 1 in 4 families with children in Tom Green County have times when there is not enough money to buy food. That's 5,400 households in the San Angelo, and coronary heart diseases alone cost the United States $100 billion each year in health care services, medications, and lost productivity. The Tom Green County Hunger Initiative provides education on topics that affect the ability or the inability of residents to be food secure, including health and wellness, community organizing, hunger outreach, and overcoming hunger barriers. The Texas Hunger Initiative San Angelo Regional Office, along with the co-sponsors, the Laura W. Bush Institute for Women's Health, and additional sponsors, Sonora Bank, Shannon Medical Center, Region 15 Education Center, and HEB, have organized the West Texas Hunger Summit. Therefore, I, Duane Morrison, the mayor of the city of San Angelo, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim March 26, 2001-5, as the Second Annual West Texas Hunger Summit in San Angelo, Texas, as a way of educating the citizens about the way we can work together to make our region food secure. Thank you, Mary Herbert, and you have the microphone now.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to invite all of you to attend the West Texas Hunger Summit. It's our second annual. It will be at the Education Service Center on March 26 from 9 to 4. And you can go to our Facebook page, Texas Hunger Initiative San Angelo, to register. We have a variety of topics that we think you'll be very interested in. Our keynote speaker is Dr. Baker Harrell, who will be talking about the relationship between health and hunger. He will also give us an opportunity to sit around the tables and brainstorm for our own community on the things that we might want to do, to change, or whatever we can think of, ideas that would work in our community. Then we'll also have some breakout sessions in the afternoon. You'll have eight choices of topics and speakers to attend. Everything from Dinner Tonight with Texas Agri Live to Food Gleaning with the Baylor University. Two ladies from Baylor University are coming to show how they utilize the food that's left over in the cafeterias so that it can be repurposed and it won't go to waste. We have that. We have someone coming to talk about the SNAP program, AIDZ, how to apply, who's eligible, what they can buy, what they can do with it, all of that kind of thing. Then we also have someone coming to talk about food insecurity. And we just have several to choose from. I won't go out through all of them, but we would love to have you attend. Once again, it's on March 26, and we are taking registrations right now. Thank you very much.
Let's get a picture. Where we going to get Brian right here? Thank you, buddy. Essence, come back up here. We've got to take a picture. We forgot, and Brian didn't remind you. Get us a picture, Brian. All right, the next one is National Works Zone Safety Awareness Week. Travis, come on up, sir. Let me...
Tracy.
Tracy, goodness, come on up. Let me... Have you been called worse than that?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Let me read this. Work zones and construction areas on and along state roadways can be lethal places. Last year, of 146 people, 87% of whom were motorists, were killed in more than 19,000 work zone crashes along Texas highways. These figures marked increases of more than 20% in fatalities and a 12% rise in collisions from 213. The two top factors contributing to work zone crashes are our failure to control speed and driver inattention. Because of the dangerousness of failing to carefully navigate, a work zone traffic finds double when workers are present and can cost up to $2,000. With more than 2,500 active work zones at any given time statewide, the potential for tragedy is always present. In an effort to remind drivers to slow down, pay attention, exercise extra caution when driving through work zones, the Texas Department of Transportation has issued a call to action, which is called "Drive Safe in Work Zones So We All Get Home." This campaign coincides with the National Work Zone Awareness Week from March 23 through March 27. During this time, TechDOT's message signs along state roadways will remind drivers to drive carefully through work zones. The city of San Angelo commends the Texas Department of Transportation, and particularly TechDOT's San Angelo District, for reminding drivers of the need to use caution in work zones so that we all get home safely. Now, therefore, I, Duane Morrison, mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim March 23 through March 27, 215, as Work Zone Awareness Week in San Angelo, Texas. You get to speak now, Tracy.
So, thank you, Mayor Morrison. Thank you, council. On behalf of the TechDOT employees and then the contractors that we have working for us that work in work zones, I thank you for this proclamation. Just wanted to recognize that National Work Zone Awareness Week is something that we do every spring in the beginning of the construction, summer construction season, just to remind drivers that the work zones are particularly challenging. There's different hazards from anyplace else that you drive. Just asking everybody to be careful, recognize that there are people out there standing next to those cones. They're work zones, very tricky, very dangerous. Just ask that you give them a little extra attention. And then also for yourselves, just be careful, because as Mayor Morrison read, a lot of the fatalities that happen in a work zone are actually the motorists that have crashes. And unfortunately, yesterday, we had a grim reminder on our State Highway 158 project, and we actually had a motorist killed in a work zone. So, just ask that next week and then throughout the summer season that everybody would just remember to drive with a special care and caution, recognizing that there are extra challenges driving in a work zone. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And if you drove down North Bryant yesterday, you noticed there's work going on there at that intersection where the high school kids come across. Appreciate that, buddy man. That has been needed for some time. That will help the safety along there. So, I thank you for that also, Tracy. Have one more proclamation. It's the National Cancer Registars Week. Ms. Sonnenberg, please step forward.
Good morning. How are you?
Hi.
Kathy, it's good to meet you.
Let me read this, please, and then I'll let you both make speeches. During the week of April 6, 10 through 10 of 215, cancer registrars will be honored nationwide by observing National Cancer Registars Week and statewide by observing Texas Cancer Registars Week. This annual observance honors all members and cancer registry professionals whose vision and core values are set in making a difference in the war on cancer. Cancer registrars are health care professionals that participate in the war on cancer by being advocates for this nation's cancer patient population displayed through their expertise and diligence in cancer data collection. Cancer registrars are the individuals that ensure the timely, accurate, and complete collection of quality cancer data. This data is fundamental to the nation's cancer prevention and treatment efforts. Cancer registrars bridge the gap between cancer patients and the many researchers and health professionals who need access to quality cancer data in order to make a wide variety of public health decisions related to cancer research, diagnosis, and treatment. In acknowledgement of their vital role, National and Texas Cancer Registars Week 215 will be celebrated April 6 through April 10 with the theme "Cancer Registars: The Lighthouse in a Storm of Change." Now, therefore, I, Duane Morrison, the mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through April 10, 2015, as National Cancer Registars Week in San Angelo, Texas, for a successful observance of Cancer Registars Week on all levels. Who gets to make a speech? Or who's first, I mean?
I think he pretty much said it all. I'm the president of Textra, which is Texas Tumor Registars Association, and so I challenged everybody. We already get it recognized on a national level every year and a state level every year, so I made the challenge that everybody try to get it acknowledged on a city level or a county level, whichever the case may be. And so, I thank you for recognizing us, and I think that's all I have to say.
Do you want your turn?
Oh, cancer touches everyone, so...
Yes, it does. Well, I get a picture then.
Oh, good.
We can do that.
Yes.
Come right here.
There you go.
And now, it is the time in our meeting when we call for, ask for, allow, public comment. Let me read the... Read... Got to do with the legalities first, and then I will ask for public comment from anyone in the audience who wants to speak for anything, pro or con, good or bad, that's not on the agenda. The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. On public hearing items, public input will be received on each item immediately following the council discussion and prior to any action on the item. Each member of the public should make the remarks from the podium and begin by stating their name. Remarks by each citizen will be limited to three minutes unless waived by a council member for all speaking on that matter. No individual will be allowed to speak more than once on any subject until every citizen wishing to comment has done so. The line starts at the front. Come forward, and let's have public comment. Like we made it again. We dodged another bullet. If there is no public comment, then I will take it to the council. I will ask council if there is any announcements that they would like to make, statements they need to make, and also if there are any items on the consent that you want pulled to the regular. I'll start with you, Elizabeth.
As a comment, I just want to thank everyone for attending the neighborhood chat last night. We had about 40 individuals, and I see Tommy Darwin in the back. He is our meeting facilitator. Tommy, you want to wave? He's the one who keeps us on time, on track, and makes sure that everyone behaves well. We also had council candidates in the room. We had the city manager joining us, as well as the police chief. So, I appreciate the attendance. I really appreciate the interest. It's really a fun way to gain public input on certain issues, and I'll talk more about that when the item comes up on CIP. Thank you.
Do you have any items on consent that you want to pull? Mr. Vardman.
I don't have anything that I want to pull. I did want to note that the fire department's going to be starting the 2015 Muscular Dystrophy MDA Fill the Boot Campaign. You know, I'm always thankful and amazed at our citizens and how generous they are, and I appreciate the fire department doing it for that good cause.
Thank you, Don. Ms. Farmer?
I don't have anything that I want to pull from the consent agenda. I do have a couple of announcements. This coming March 31 and April 1, I will be in Lubbock attending the Port to Plains Energy Summit. And then also in April, April 20 through 21st, will be attending... 24th, will be attending the board meeting in Washington, DC. And I look forward to giving a report on that. Also, on April 9, I will be having a Let's Talk Town Hall meeting at 6:00 PM at the TLC Church in the main auditorium, and hope to be able to give some updates to the folks about all of the construction and the streets and whatnot that are going on out in the southwest portion of town.
Thank you. John?
I do not have anything, Mayor.
Marty?
I have nothing.
I don't suppose Rodney has anything either, has he?
No, Rodney's pretty quiet today.
I don't think we'll have any dissension out of Mr. Fleming today. Now, Rodney is out of town for spring break, and he told us last time that he would not be here today. All right, if there are no pull... If there are no changes to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept.
Move approval.
Second.
That was Marty, and that was you, Elizabeth, right? We have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. It has been seconded. Any council commented at all on this before we call for the vote? Do I have any public comment on the consent agenda before I call for the vote? If not, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Put a 6-0 on that one, Mr. Brian. Moving on to number seven, public hearing and comment, which is consideration to approve a resolution of general support for Maplewood Park Low Income Housing Tax Credit, LIHTC.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, could I stop? Maybe after this one, but I had asked you yesterday, we could pull number 10 up to the front, to the top, so we can do it right after this, if we get the consent, you know?
Does anybody have a problem with doing number 10 next?
After Bob.
After Bob.
Okay. All right down here?
That's right.
Where was I in my reading there, John? Am I going to have to start over again at the front? I'm going to pick up somewhere where I was.
You just read consideration.
We will do number 10 next. To construct affordable housing apartments in San Angelo on the east side of West 33rd. Mr. Solis, you are on, sir.
Mayor, council, we have a second low-income housing tax credit project that is asking for a resolution of support from council. The Maplewood Park project is a 72-unit mixed-income apartment complex on the corner of West 33rd Street and Bryant Boulevard on the north side of town. We held a town hall meeting earlier in the month and did get some citizen comments. Among those were the concern of increased crime and traffic in the area. We also received several phone calls. One caller was okay with the project, as long as the city was interested in placing a speed bump to slow down vehicles, which, in her words, currently speed up and down the street like NASCAR. So, anyway, other than those comments, we do have Mr. Paul Holden here from Zimmerman Properties to cover some key aspects of the project.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you very much. My name is Paul Holden, and I'm with Zimmerman Properties, and we are the ones proposing a new apartment community for you on West 33rd and Bryant Street. Very quickly, let me... Here we go. Just very quickly about Zimmerman Properties. We've been in business since 1968, started as a property management company in Springfield, Missouri, and they did a number of things until 1988, when they decided to go into the apartment business and start building apartments using the federal program of housing tax credits. And this company is in the second generation of ownership of the company now. We have... Well, in Texas, we have 23 communities, and I have been involved in all of those. Nationwide, I think we have about 80 communities at the moment. So, it's a good company, big company. We have about 300 employees, and we came to the city of San Angelo not knowing what to expect, and we found a very warm welcome here. Your staff, everyone that we have talked to within the city and worked with has been absolutely wonderful so far to work with. But what we're doing is that we have put in a request for an application for credits, and one of the scoring criteria is a resolution of support from the city. And the credits are six to one oversubscribed, so everything is going to be separated by one point, and we think that this is going to be a very good property in San Angelo. We look forward to it. I have the site plan on the screen right now. You can see where the buildings are, how they're going to be laid out on the property. And we did listen to public comment.
Would you back up to that one more time, please?
Yes, of course. This is our...
Okay, I've seen what I need.
A clubhouse, and we've just... The way the building's going to be laid out, we're planning on having one way in and one way out.
Where is the property line on the east side? Are you right on the property line there? How much of a buffer will be between the backside and the next neighbor to the east of you?
Well, right now, it's 30 feet, I believe it is. We can adjust that, we can move it. And we're planning on putting a screening barrier of some... fencing of some type, whether it be a six-foot cedar fence or whatever the neighborhood would like is what we're planning on building.
Apologize for interrupting.
No, it's not a problem at all. Listen, I appreciate it. This is typically what our buildings look like. I know that these kind of black and white drawings don't show you a whole lot, but let me go to some of the photographs that I have. This is Stone Canyon, which is our property I built in Amarillo, and this is the typical architecture that we have. This property has been full of a waiting list ever since we... Well, before we finished construction. We put tot lots for children. We have two tot lots on these and an entry marker, and this is typically what our two-story properties will look like. We do have our own management company. We have our own construction company. We have our own development company. And so, in our group... I've been with them 13 years. I've never seen them sell a property. And so, it's a long-term company, second generation of ownership is there now. The third generation is being groomed to take those next positions, and so it's in the Zimmerman family for a long time, it looks like, and I'm very proud to be a part of their company. At this point, can I answer any questions? I think we have something that you're very much going to like in the city of San Angelo.
Well, I did make the presentation that you made last week, and I thought you covered it very well. There were a couple of questions that our citizens had. I thought you answered them very well.
Thank you.
And although that sometimes we don't want these things in our neighborhood, I think this is something that is... This is good for the neighborhood. I think this is... And I don't like this writing "low income," because this is not low income. This is moderate income.
It is moderate income.
And that's kind of a misnomer. But these are very nice apartments.
Yes, they are very nice.
We'll take care of our teachers and our policemen and nurses.
We will have nurses. We're going to have elderly also. We really do... First thing that when our company comes in is our managers are told to go talk to the senior community. If you can fill all of it up with seniors, let's do that. Then let's talk to school teachers. Then let's talk to police officers. Let's talk to sheriff's department. There's a whole group that they're going to go through. So, it is a bit of a misnomer with it says "low-income housing." And this was started by Congress in 1986, where they come up with this? I don't know. But it serves a different clientele, and this is the only housing program that I have ever seen that has been very, very successful and continues to be.
We'll take... Start with Charlotte. Who else wants to comment from council? John?
I'm just glad you're supportive of these projects. I don't remember those words coming out of your mouth on the last one, so I'm just tickled.
I voted against the resolution last time because I don't think I ought to be voting for anything for someone from Dallas or Amarillo or Chicago that I'm not giving to my own builders. That frustrates me that we don't give to our own people what we give to outsiders, and I voted against it for that reason. And I'm not going to let this fail, but I might vote against you again today for the exact same reason. So, Charlotte?
I also attended the town hall meeting last week, and I want to tell you, Mr. Holden, I was very impressed with your presentation. I was impressed with your facts, the fact that you literally answered all the questions that were presented to you, whether they were three questions or four questions, you answered all of them at one time, and you know your material, you know your industry, and that was impressive in your answers and how you came across. I voted against the last one, the resolution, and my reasons were the stability of the ground area for that, and also I believe that one should build at least comparable to the construction in the area, the residential or better. And your layout and your construction materials showed that you were going to do that. Your programs that you're going to have on the property showed that you care about the community, and I certainly am in favor of the project. I do want to answer a question as to how the tax credit got started, and it was an intent on the federal government to improve blighted areas in the U.S., to encourage developers and builders to build in blighted areas, to improve and refurbish neighborhoods. And that's how it got started. That's probably... You weren't asked that question last week, but that really is some truth of the matter, and I'm enthused about the project. I do plan on supporting the project and wish you luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
John?
Mr. Holder, I too supported the last project over there, and Charlotte hit it right on the head, blighted areas. I've got a blighted area right here past the bridge that you're more than welcome to go and look at. There was a proposed apartment complex being built at one time, and it fell through the cracks, but my question is, even on the last one that we approved... Excuse me. How strict are you on the applicants that come to you? I mean, do you do a background check? What all do you do?
Yes, we do have quite a process that they go through, and it doesn't matter who walks in the door, they have the same process that they have to go through every time. They fill out the application. They go through background checks, they go through checks for financial background history, they go through rental history checks, they'll go through criminal background checks, they'll go through quite a number of other things. And they have to be approved through that process according to the federal standards that are set for going through that process. Yes, sir. So, we're very strict on it because we're going to own this property for a long time, and it has to be run just like any other commercial endeavor, that you have income, you have expenses, and if you don't have the leaseability, you're not going to have that income. So, we want to make sure that property stays nicely done, nicely kept, so we can continue to lease it year after year after year.
Good. I'm a big proponent of affordable housing, and Lord knows we know it, we need it around here, more affordable housing, and throughout the city, not just certain segments of the population, but everywhere. So, I'm en supportive of your idea. I love the quality of work you guys produce, and if you maintain it, that's even better.
We're going to maintain it, trust me. If... And when it's built, if you see anything that you don't like, I'll give you my cell phone number, you call me, and it's going to be fixed that afternoon.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Marty, did you have anything to add, sir?
No, I would just like to add, and I've got a question for Bob. I'd just like for you to reiterate, it's this... The units will be as far as who... What income will be in each particular?
This one is a little bit unique. It actually has about 10% of mixed-income units, which is basically open to the market. It can be anybody, including moderate income. The terminology that they use in low-income is low-income, which is 60% of median. So, we'll have... Most of them will be filled out from that level down, but we do have some mixed-income market rate units there as well.
Okay, so it's a mixture of...
It is. And I kind of... To be honest with you, I... And I kind of, to be honest with you, I would, I would support any mixed income apartment complexes. They're much more viable, I think. They're, I think they're much more attractive to the, to the public. So.
I agree. And, and from the public, from the, from the town hall meeting we had, it appeared to me that the, the primary concerns were concerns that they had that, that are actually going on right now anyway. Speed being a problem coming down 33rd.
They do move fast.
Yes. And, and the intersection there at North Bryant, and, and what, what I guess you'd consider mischievous children, they thought, as far as breaking windows and stuff. But all that's going on now. So, you know, I, I think we need to have the chief do, do some work over there possibly. So.
Well, this is your area. Marty, do you want to move?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
You made a statement about the, about the, I guess, the advantage to outside builders versus inside builders. On this request, there's no request for a deferral of any development fees. This is simply a letter of support from the city.
That's correct.
Okay. Just making sure.
I, I think the, the, I, I understand the program. I think the, the, the problem that, that with the program is it's giving an unfair advantage to, to-
Yes.
-to the owner of the complex as far as renting the units that are, that, that our, our local builders don't have. But if they wanted to get into the program, they could get into the program.
Absolutely.
And these are federal funds. If they don't come to San Angelo, they'll go to Midland, Odessa. If they don't go there, they'll go somewhere else. If they don't come to Texas, they'll go to a different state. So we locally don't only have a choice in that. We don't control that. So we certainly want to support them. So.
And, and I would like to make one comment. I, I really commend the people that spoke, the constituents of SMD Two. They were-
Civil.
They, thank you.
Yes.
That's, that's a good word, you know. And we'll leave it at that. We, we won't, we won't talk about SMD One since Mr. Fleming's not here. So.
They were. They're very civil. They were not demeaning. The questions that they asked were very viable. And we all have concerns about traffic in our neighborhood and our values. And that's a good point, Marty. I appreciate that.
Yeah. I, I'd like to hear a comment before I make a motion.
Okay. Very well. Anyone else care to speak before I open it up to public comment?
I had one more question.
Yes, John?
Mr. Holder, Marty mentioned the apartment rental, you know, the, the pricing. Are you at liberty to at least give us a low and, and a high range?
Well, this is all based on the county's median income, and I don't have those numbers with me. But, you know, we're going to have some that are, I think we have two units that are relatively low rents. And we're going to try our very best to put seniors into those units. And then it will go up to just a slightly higher level, which seniors again, and maybe some, some families. But then we'll have a mix of the 60% incomes and then the market rate, which will, whatever the market will bear on 10% of those. So it'll be eight units. But I, I don't have those rental rates with me. Every time I make a comment on, here's what the rates are going to be, my management company comes back and says, Paul, no, no, the incomes went up, the rents went up, now you've misstated. So.
It's probably not fair to ask you for a ballpark amount. So.
I, I just don't have the information with me. But I can get that to you, Mr. Silva. But the other, Mayor, I wanted to answer your question about outsiders coming in and the local contractors not having the opportunity. We're a construction management company. We hire all local subcontractors. We don't have subcontractors that follow us or that are our people. So everything will be subcontracted, all the lumber, all the concrete, all, everything will be local.
I'm glad to hear that. Because we've had projects before where the area codes on the vehicles around our projects were not 325. And I would like to see 325 area codes on the vehicles that work on our projects.
You will see that.
And maybe even, you know, might stand a, a Midland or, because we have our bedroom communities, Bableen, Midland, and Odessa. So we might have a few of those. But I'd like to see primarily 325s.
I think right now we'd have a better chance of finding somebody with a 325 than we would a Midland address. They're so busy out there, you can't get a-
Well, they were, they were busy until all of that. Charlotte, do you have a comment, ma'am?
Yes. It has to do with the rents and the medium average area income, which I believe is $51,250 or something in that range, isn't it, Bob? And I, I want the public to understand this project is not a low income. Like you just stated, there's low, medium to moderate. And I want to caution council when we say, yes, policemen and firemen would, would be able to fit into this project. But the statement was made at the previous that our police and fire, you know, would be able to live there. And that's just not so because they are low income. And council needs to be very careful when we do a comparison because our starting salary for our police is over-
Okay.
-the low income.
But if they have three children, then they would qualify.
If they have three children, but they're not abundant, so three-bedroom units in that. So it's, it's the size of the units with the income and the size of the family.
Exactly.
And you add two dogs and-
Three kids, two dogs, and you're there.
Two dogs and three kids. Well, we, we will have some market rate units, so we hope that the officers do live there. We look forward to it. Yes, ma'am.
Done.
I just move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion to approve this. We do have a second. I'll now open it up for public comment.
Did he want to include the 325 in that motion, or?
You're going to put 325 in that motion?
I, I think he's got it covered.
I think that is understood, sir. Do I have public comment? Did we answer your question, sir?
Yes, you did.
Thank you. Come on, Jim. Are you satisfied with the answer you got?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. My name is Jim Turner. I'm retired military, for those of you who may not remember that. And that is one of the demographics, one of the group of people that's most likely, especially your junior enlisted, to be eligible for housing here. And we don't want to forget that because that also impacts the likelihood of Goodfellow expanding and so on. The availability of housing for the junior enlisted especially is critical. And this is the type of, this is one type of housing that benefits Goodfellow as much as it does the rest of the community. And we don't want to forget that. Thank you.
Good point, Jim. Any other comment? I would ask that maybe you try and route this traffic, maybe to go east, take them down to Lake Drive, or take them to Chadburn, instead of everybody trying to get out on Bryant, just a suggestion. But that's, that's logistics. That's something we can work out. Any more comment before we take a vote on this? It has been, it has, the motion has been made that we approve it as presented. It has been seconded. No further public comment. Any other comment from council? Calling for the vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Go ahead and put a 6-0 on it. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right. Let's take up number 10. I just saw Susan Morris walk in, and I want to make a statement because she's been in charge of these downtown murals. We now have lights, or are going to have lights on our murals, and this is something that no one else in the country has. And she also had us on Bob Phillips, country reporter last Saturday, where he highlighted San Angelo and our downtown historic murals. Susan, thank you very much, ma'am. Let's move on to number 10, which is consideration of authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Downtown San Angelo, Inc., and substantially the attached form for a five-year term to fund services to be performed by DSA as a lead entity in the provision of services promoted, promoting and supporting redevelopment and revitalization of San Angelo's historic Main Street and downtown development district to partnership promotion, design, and stimulation of investment. Mr. Howard, you are on, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, members of city council. As been stated, this is the establishment of a new five-year contract for, between the city and Downtown San Angelo, Inc. I'd like to mention right off the bat is that this is a new type of contract. The previous contract, five-year contract, was more of an administrative services contract focused on support for administration and salaries. However, the new proposed contract is more of a performance-based contract, and you'll see that as I go through the presentation. So just a little bit about Downtown San Angelo, Inc., and they'll be following me to share a little bit more about some of their accomplishments and the like. But it was established back in 2004 as a nonprofit focused on downtown revitalization. They are a member of the Main Street program and is recognized by the National Trust for Historic Preservation in terms of what their focus and their efforts are in terms of the Main Street program. And so, just a little bit, by the way, of background, the, the, prior to the contract that was consummated back in 2009, the city provided $50,000 to, to Downtown San Angelo, Inc. for administrative support. In 2009, that number increased to $75,000. We were using general fund dollars at some point during that period of time. The shift in funds what came, was no longer general fund dollars, and we were using COSA DC funds that have some sales tax. Back in the late summer of last year, as we were all aware that the contract was getting ready to expire, Downtown San Angelo, Inc. did approach COSA DC about increasing that amount from $75,000 to $100,000 for administrative support services. At that point, we began as staff to discuss the issue related to the need to shift the focus to more of an administr, more of a performance-based contract rather than one that's focused primarily on administrative support. Additionally, we met with you all in an executive session to talk about the source of funds. As I stated, the funds were half some sales tax. We believe that for different reasons that the other funding sources should be considered as we support, continue to support the efforts of Downtown San Angelo, Inc. Again, just more about Downtown San Angelo, Inc. They've been focused on downtown preservation and have been very successful in some of the work that they've been doing. They've collaborated quite frankly with a number of partners to include the city, to really look at revitalizing, establishing, or increasing the tax base in the urban core of the city. So that's not to be understated. So just a little bit about the contract. It, it contains a scope of services, which is essentially those things that will be required of Downtown San Angelo, Inc. within the contract. It contains 11 of those sort of performance measures. It talks about auditing of the funds and activities and the like, and makes reference to the idea of termination of the contract for, for specific reasons outlined in the contract. What was determined at the executive session, as you all recall, is that we would blend the, would be a blend of sources to include hotel occupancy tax and the general fund. So subsequent to our executive session, there was some discussion about the funding over the course of the five years being decreased over time from $75,000, which is the, the current amount being support, provided to Downtown San Angelo, Inc. Obviously, to include also the performance measures, to decrease over the period of five years to $15,000. However, in meeting, subsequent meetings with Downtown San Angelo, Inc., subsequent proposal was provided to us by them, which suggests that the funding should remain at $75,000 over the course of the next five years. So the option would be that we would consider either proposal one, proposal two, or some alternate proposal that you may decide, elect to develop. So again, the, just a little bit about some of the scope, some of the services or performance measures that we're going to be asking for, a work plan, a quarterly report, which they currently have, have been doing, looking at targeting business, marketing, and attraction. And let me just say this as we go along, is that we've, most of these things are things that they've already been doing. So this is not necessarily a stretch in terms of new, new, a new focus, because again, their focus is on downtown revitalization and the four, four points within the Main Street program. So again, focusing on marketing, retent, business retention and the like. Also working with partner agencies to promote downtown and to encourage historic preservation and revitalization as with, with, which is consistent with their mission. So the proposed action today is to authorize the contract. Again, we have, the point of the, of discussion is probably focused around the amount of funding that you provide, you would provide each year for the next five years. However, I know that Downtown San Angelo, Inc. is also here and would like to provide some comments as well.
To add to Patrick's, he touched on the performance measures. And, and we did have a discussion with Downtown San Angelo and went over those.
Yes.
There were some that staff had. They had, came to this list that Patrick has now that I think both groups are, are very comfortable with.
That's correct. We came to consensus on, there were originally 18. As we met, we, we sort of riddled that down to basically 10, 10 performance measures. And so, again, the point of discussion is probably focused on the funding specifically.
Thank you, Patrick. Brenda, Dale?
Do you have a pot plate or?
Just my mouth.
Okay. It's good enough.
It's usually good enough.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Maybe it's not good enough.
Good morning, council and mayor. Downtown San Angelo, Inc. is asking for your continued support of $75,000 a year for the next five years. In 2015, we will celebrate a decade of downtown revitalization. The success of the redevelopment is due to the efforts of many, including the city of San Angelo, particularly the planning department, the past and current city council members, the many mayors in COSA DC, but most importantly, to the entrepreneurial spirit of those people who saw the opportunity and had a vision for investing into Downtown San Angelo. Today, Downtown San Angelo, Inc. is asking for your continued financial support of the organization. Much progress has been made. If we look back to 2005, when we became a Main Street city, you will remember that only three businesses were open after the hour of 5 o'clock. Those were Blaine's Pub, Fuente's Restaurant, and Miss Hattie's Restaurant. Today, we are proud to say that 17 businesses are open after the hour of 5 o'clock. That does not include the many retail stores that also have opened. In 2005, we had five businesses that were in the retail business. Those businesses still exist today, and they have created the foundation for which many other retail businesses have opened. And yet, with all of that progress, we still have many vacant buildings. I think at last count, we saw there are 70 buildings. So we know that our work is not done. In fact, you could say that the work has just begun. We believe with your support that continued work will produce the same kinds of results that today we are talking about. Since 2005, $88 million has been reinvested into the downtown area. Of that $88 million, 49 million of that has come from the private sector. Those are big numbers, and those are numbers, I believe, that without the support of city council, and in terms of creating a Main Street city, those results would not have happened. And we say that because if you go back to the year 2004, those results did not exist. We've been a great marketing arm to help promote and give a vision to the opportunities that exist in downtown. And we've had many people who've looked at other successes in other parts of the country and said, we want to be a part of that. We know that when empty buildings have new life, property values in downtown go up, and the city benefits. We know that when businesses are successful, the city also becomes more successful because the tax revenues increase. We know that when property values go up, more money pours into the tiers fund. And we are proud to say that Downtown San Angelo, Inc. provided the initial funding to create the tier zone. So not only has a tier zone put more money back into the infrastructure and other areas in downtown, it has also provided the funding to help improve the northern tiers district as well. The current success of the revitalization of historic downtown has helped in the recruiting efforts of ASU, the hiring efforts of Shannon and Community Hospitals, the positive experience of our Goodfellow personnel, and tourism has started to come back as hotel rooms have become more available and more affordable. become more available and more affordable. We ask that you continue to support us and challenge us and ask us the hard questions. We believe with your questions, your support, and your challenges, we can continue to make the revitalization of Downtown San Angelo Inc. even something that, that we can be more proud of, that the citizens can be more proud of. I know many people said to me in 2005, Brenda, there's no way Downtown San Angelo Inc. will ever come back alive. It's dead. It'll stay dead. We're proud to say it's not dead. It's come alive. We ask that you allow us the opportunity to work hard for the people of San Angelo and make our historic district an area of great pride for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Questions?
Council?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
No question, but for the sake of the conversation, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve Proposal Two and see if there's support on the council for that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And I will also add that for every dollar that the city gives to Downtown Inc., they have been able to make or exceed that amount. So, it's, it's not just the city. Y'all are doing your job as well.
Correct.
And I worked at Sears before it was the Ed B. Keyes Building back in the 70s. I remember when San Angelo was vibrant with wards and pennies in the banks. And in 2004, before y'all started, the only thing we had heard after dark was use the gunfire. You changed all that and I appreciate it.
You know, I want to add that, and I'll admit that I've been the one pushing and cutting budgets and don't want any double dipping. You know, you get money from the Chamber, you get money from us, money's here, money's there, and want to be very cautious on the spending. But after reviewing the projects that Downtown San Angelo has done, I'm inclined to agree that Proposal Number Two should be done because the achievements have been short of amazing.
Thank you.
And I think my whole purpose was to get the Chamber and Downtown San Angelo and the Downtown Development Group, to get everybody talking, all of the economic development ideas to share and to work together. And I have seen that start happening. And I commend you, all that you have done, staff has done, and the downtown group for what they're doing, because there's breath alive and wellness flowing in our downtown again.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Don?
Brenda, are y'all in agreement with the services and performance measures that's been set out here?
Yes, we sat down with city staff and Rick Wise organized a meeting with us and we reviewed every item line by line and we came to consensus in the conversation. So, we're very happy with the way the contract is written and we believe strongly it's a contract in combination of working with the city staff that we can achieve those results with great end results.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that sometimes we can get lost in the weeds on a lot of things that we do, but looking at your production, your, your performance, your success, if we compare the investment that we make in this to the other entities, I, I think that you should have five years of a stable income. And I think that we, the, the city or the citizens will realize that, as the mayor said, in a, in a pretty high multiplier. So, I think that you're doing a very good job. I'll, I'll just reiterate what Councilwoman Farmer said, is that there is an expectation that you as an economic development driver, continue to work with your partners, whether it's with COSA DC or the Chamber, to really sort of maximize the investment that we make in each of those entities and, and be, be good friends to one another. But I'm, I'm very excited over what you've been doing. I'm very excited on the, the things that you've told me about that are not for public information yet. And I can't imagine pulling funding or reducing funding at a point when you are just now realizing a lot of work that's been put into this project. So, good luck in the future.
Thank you.
John?
Brenda, the downtown area is right smack in the middle of SMD III, which is my district.
Correct.
And I'm proud of what's happening. I've seen the old photos of San Angelo back in the 40s or whatever years they were. And I, I was amazed at how the cars were just lined up.
Correct.
I mean, from corner to corner. And that's where we are today, you know?
Correct.
And I think you guys have taken the lead in that and I'm proud to be a partner with you guys, because I know, I remember growing up here in the downtown area, I was 10, 11, 12 years old, and we'd walk up and down the streets and just empty building after empty building. It was almost like a ghost town at one time. But now, in looking back, I know that a lot of it has, you know, you didn't do it all, but you were the, you kind of lit the fuse to the whole thing. And I'm proud of where we're at, where we're going. I know some of the stuff that's still coming our way, so it's exciting. So, I'm in support of you guys. Are you perfect? No. But I think you're doing a very, very good job.
Thank you.
Marty?
As, as far as the motion goes, is funding coming also is from Proposal Two?
I, I don't think it's necessary for the sake of the proposal that we identify which funding source it is. I think that's, we can deal with that in the.
Well, it says 50/50 hotel and general fund.
I'm fine with the hotel and the general. And if we need to modify that as a council, as time goes on, we can do that. I don't think she cares.
No.
You don't care where it comes, you don't care who writes the check?
We just like the support. Thank you very much.
Greenback, is it Greenback?
Yes, it is. And again, we say we're, we are here to help make our downtown a better community. So, the hard questions, the challenges that are thrown out to us, we welcome. It makes us a better organization and keeps us focused and makes sure that we're all on the same page at the same time. So, we welcome any involvement, any question, any challenge.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
And Brenda, and you heard some of the concerns at the very beginning of this conversation, so you know what we're looking for, what we want from you guys. So, run with it.
Great.
I mean, we've given you support here, I, I assume, but you know, you know where it all came from.
We know where all the empty buildings still exist.
Yes.
I just don't want it to go back like it was in 2003. From 1979, when downtown died, is when we moved to the mall. From 1979 to 2003, I don't want it to go back to that.
It's great, particularly at night, when you see that we really do have a parking problem. And I will tell you, in 2005, we did not have a parking problem at the hour of 5 o'clock.
It's happening during the daytime hours as well.
It is too.
It is, we are revitalizing. Charlotte?
I want to point out that I too was very hesitant in the beginning in 2005, because having the liquor sales and, and what we have downtown, and I remember the council, Mr. Mayor, if you'll remember, and Johnny will remember, we stressed we wanted our community to be family-oriented.
Correct.
And if it got out of hand, we were going to have problems. And I have to commend the DSA for staying on top of.
Thank you.
That control and keeping it, even with liquor sales, that they have kept the family environment downtown. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, I will support the 75. I will not support the, the 100 that you initially asked for.
We're asking for 75.
I don't, I would not support that.
We understand.
But I will support staying with 75. Any public comment on this before we take a vote? Line up right behind Brenda if you have public comment on this. Come up, Ms. Morris.
Mayor, while she's coming up, the, the motion would help staff if the motion would say what the funding source is. It wants, that way we can, you can change it later, but initially it would help us expedite.
Will you amend?
Yeah, I'm in the emotion, the motion to say $75,000 per year for five years with an equal split between the city's hotel motel occupancy tax and general fund.
Will you amend your second?
Yes.
I forgot. Yes.
Ms. Morris, you have the floor, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify, to state that I've been involved with Downtown San Angelo since it organized. I was on the original board for six years. And I was probably the primary one that brought Main Street and the Texas Historic Commission to San Angelo, because I had worked with them for many years in Louisiana and I saw what wonderful things the Main Street Program did with downtowns that were in serious trouble. And I'm delighted to see what all we have accomplished here. It's amazing to watch and to see all the business. And I had a very interesting development just last week. I got a call from one of our beautifully restored hotels that's now open, and they wanted to talk about a mural. So, I went out to talk to them. And this is in the downtown area. And when I found out where they wanted to put it and what they wanted, I thought you'd all be delighted to know. The owner is from California. He has fallen in love with San Angelo and he loves the downtown. And he wants these murals to duplicate what downtown San Angelo looked like in the years passed, when all of the buildings were full of business and other streets were all lined with cars, like you were talking about a few minutes ago. So, those murals will go on that building. And this is coming from a man who lives in California and has, his interest is not only in restoring this wonderful hotel, but in preserving the history on their building. So, I'm delighted to see that the council is supporting downtown San Angelo and Main Street and we want to keep it going. Thank you very much.
And you might add, he's paying for this mural.
Yes.
That's even, that's even better.
That's even better.
We don't slow you down. You'll have a mural on every building in town.
Oh, no, I don't think we're going to go to that extent.
Mr. Mayor?
But we are trying to keep the history alive.
I appreciate it, Susan, very much.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Let me put this bug in your ear. Time and time again, I get the comment, you know, and we love your murals, you're doing amazing, outstanding job. But as representative of SMD III or the city as a whole, a lot of my constituents are Hispanic and they are so much wanting some Hispanic-themed mural out there somewhere.
Well, you know what? I have been asked frequently of late, what the next mural's going to be. And a week ago, I didn't know this one we're talking about was going to happen. But what I have said is, when somebody has the building and the historic subject and the money, we will get another mural.
We understand that.
So, that's where we are right now.
I need your business card.
I've been raising money for 13 years now, this month. I'm getting too old and too tired to keep doing that. So, this solution that was brought to me last week answered all of those requirements.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other further comment on this? Any other council comment on this? Then I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of Proposal Number Two, which is 75,000 per year for the next five years, half hotel occupancy tax, half, half general fund to support and to continue to support for the work that has been done in downtown San Angelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Put a 6-0 on that one. And it is 10:07. I'm going to call a 15-minute break. It is 10:34. I call this meeting back to order and we will go back and pick up item number eight. This is consideration of approving closure of city offices for employee participation in the Neighborhood Revitalization Blitz Cleanup Project in the Fort Concho neighborhood on 5 February 24, 2015, excluding offices of essential personnel who directly provide public health, safety services. Mr. Solis, you are on, sir.
Yes, sir. We are, we're here once again to request permission to let the city employees participate in the annual neighborhood blitz. It is set for April the 24th. It will require the city to close non-critical services for the day. This is our seventh event and this year, we are targeting the area between Main Street and Bell, around Harris and those neighboring streets. We call it the Fort Concho Target Neighborhood Area. Besides painting, city employees will help clean up alleyways, streets undertake special projects and facilitate, on facilities maintained by the city. And we're asking council to approve.
I'm all for this. Anyone want to make a?
Move to approve, second.
Got Johnny said move to approve, Marty said second. I think this is a good deal, Bob. It's, it's been, it's been very, very successful for our city and the, and the neighborhoods that we have worked. Council comment, Don?
The, the only thing, and I brought this up last year, in your screening process, can we keep rental property from being included in this so that it's just helping the, the people that are, are going to be there without trying to help landlords somewhat, or at least?
This is, the, the landlord portion of this actually supports a program we've had to increase the rental, affordable rental housing stock. So, we've had in the past done that, especially the areas where, and again, we, we make them, it still benefits low, moderate income families because they are the tenants. And by, by, we have an agreement with those landlords to make sure they do, in fact, rent to those low mod, moderate income families. So...
And I have no problem with that whatsoever, but the ones that you hit in there that are, are basically charging an excessive amount, perhaps, I don't, I don't think we need to help them.
Well, we, we make them, part of that agreement is to maintain the, the cap on rents, so they cannot exceed a certain amount. So, we, that's part of the deal. They have to keep it at affordable housing rates.
Okay, and you're screening?
Absolutely, we do screen. They sign and we check and we, we make them pay us back if they don't.
Okay, good deal.
That's an excellent point, Don. Are you satisfied?
Yes, sir.
Any further comment, council? Do I have public comment on this before we call for a vote? It has been moved that we allow? I'm sorry, come forward, Ms. Casper. I'm sorry, I didn't see you, ma'am.
Mary Casper, you know I had to speak on this.
Of course.
I have some questions. Number one, I assume the city employees are still going to be paid?
Yes, ma'am.
And what is the participation rate?
What is it, Bob?
We normally have a little over 300 employees. We don't include the, the police, fire, those kind of folks, a lot of admin, street and bridge, those kind of things. So, yes, it's about 50%? 40%?
Actually about a third.
A third, yeah.
And what happens with the other third or two thirds that do not participate? If they choose not to?
It is actually a mandatory for those who are, those divisions we identify to participate. If they're not there, they're work, doing work, their normal duties.
Okay, because that's not, you know, very well stated in there at all and I could very well see people saying, "Oh, let me have a day of hooky," you know? We're all continually high school students at heart, you know, no matter what age we are. How much does it cost the city?
It costs us the pay. I, it doesn't cost us anymore.
That's exactly right. It's, they're getting paid. Their, their, their mission for the day changes, but it is, it is a workday. The cost is, we do have some, some grant funds that are used for, for some of this, for some of the projects. We get the paint donated from Habitat, from Humanity. We get volunteers. And so, really, directly from the city, it's nothing, nothing from the general funds.
Okay, I would just suggest that in the future, you spell that out a little bit more correctly, more completely, so that there is no misunderstanding, because there are new people moving in and, and you know, you think, okay, you know, let's, let's, where is this coming from? Because if you're being, if you're volunteering and not being paid, that's not volunteering. So, that's...
How many years have we done this?
Seven.
Yes, I realize that, however...
It's like Will Bree's machine and he makes sure that if you're not in your office, you've got a tool in your hand and you're in the neighborhood.
Yeah, but you know, I'm just saying that there's a lot of people that are not familiar with this, so you know, let's, let's make it a little bit more transparent. Thank you.
Good point, ma'am. Thank you.
I have, Ms. Casper, I just want to let you know that on that note, I had a discussion last week with the city manager with reference to this particular item. And I made a suggestion to him then, that possibly we can look at snow day, you know, when we don't open the offices or we close earlier or late, that that, this, that this be called, you know, it's a snow day. They still get paid, but they're making up, you know, for that day.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Valenzuela?
Mayor, I do want to point out, as far as the Texas Municipal League, last year actually recognized the City of San Angelo and its... actually recognized the city of San Angelo and its spirit, uh, the TML Excellence Awards recognized the city of San Angelo, uh, for the Community Spirit Award specifically because of this program. So we were highlighted at TML. Uh, and other cities, really, the, the reason they give these awards is because other cities look at what they can do to, within their communities to make their communities better. And that's something that we've received calls about as far as implementing in other communities as well. So again, it is a highly regarded program and I'm proud of the work that the staff has done.
And next time, I could surely do a more of a elaborate presentation next time. Maybe every, every other year, I can do that, just kind of let the citizens know what we're doing.
Make yourself a note.
Will do.
Don?
Well, I was just going to, to also say that in the past, you've had people from Goodfellow out there helping us. You've had, uh, the, uh, athletes from ASU and, and different groups outside of just strictly city employees also.
It's actually a two day event. Uh, this is, I was focusing on the cit, on the employees, but it's really a two day event. The first day, the Friday is for the city employees. Saturday, we do have volunteers from the church groups that belong to WTOs. We have the ASU football team. We've had Goodfellow folks participate. So yes, it's community volunteers on a Saturday. So, uh, it's a pretty big event.
It's been massive and it's been successful. And we can, we can measure the success.
We have, we can, and we do every year.
That we've had.
And Mayor, I want to add that even, you know, being a part of it, I've seen the morale of the, of the city employees, I mean, even go up. They enjoy doing that. They enjoy getting outdoors and painting and.
We get about 50/50. Uh, those guys that's from street and bridge, they do that for a living for them. It's just another day. Uh, you know, the lawyers and, you know, the folks and admin, for example, do enjoy it because they get to go out there and meet those other employees who normally wouldn't work with.
I have a quick story on that. Last year I was painting alongside, uh, other staff members and I was wearing my cap and a staff member was talking to another one, said, I thought the city manager was supposed to be out here. Where is he? What does he think he is? And I was out there with a roller, actually, you know, so when I took my cap off and looked over there, they started laughing and the guy just kind of backed off of that comment. But it is, it is a lot of fun to be.
He's, he's no longer with us.
I've had city employees ask me, uh, what department do you work in? And you know, it's.
In fact, my former worked on the first one. First one Reagan.
And, and did you say that lawyers are qualified to use a paintbrush?
Oh, actually, they had, uh.
Dan never even looked at her.
For sure.
They do tend to fall off the ladders more.
Don't let them on the ladder.
That was planners, yeah.
Do I have any further comment on this before we take the vote?
Brian, is he breathing?
You were, you were really in your happy place, weren't you?
We've been talking about you the last five minutes. Do you know that?
He's a workaholic.
Yeah. Motion has been made with the accept this as presented. It has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Put a six oh on that one, please. Number nine, update and presentation on new residential garbage collection and recycling services. Presentation by Republic Services LTD. Get us started, Mr. Kelton, please.
All right, council, we're, uh, here today just, uh, the new contract with Republic Services moving forward, uh, we're gonna, you know, services are gonna change up, we're implementing recycling program. And Republic's just here today to kind of give you all an update on where we are, how it's going, uh, and kind of what the processes are going to be going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robert Scherls with Republic and let them, let them go.
Welcome, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, we're happy to be here to make this presentation. I just want to let you guys know that, uh, I don't know if you realize it or not, but we're going to be the first West Texas city that does curbside single stream recycling and that's something to be proud of. And, uh, so we're going to be the leaders in that and so I kind of like mentioning that to you guys. As we transition from the current, uh, rear load service to the automated, uh, recycling and trash service, we're going to be using carts. And we've introduced those before and, um, so each home, there's going to be 30,000, there's, there are 30,000 homes here in San Angelo, they're going to get a green cart for the recycling and they're going to get a tan colored cart for the trash. And we're just going to ask that people bag, please bag your trash waste in the tan cart, but the recycle cart doesn't, does not need to be bagged. So you can just have them in there. We just ask that everything be clean, dry and empty that goes in the recycle cart. And, um, we, we do have other services that, with the new contract that come along with the carted system and that is, um, the bulk pickup and, uh, that, that's, that started in, in August when the contract started. So we'll get into more detail on that a little bit later. So the, the residents are real curious as to when they're going to be getting delivery of the carts. So, uh, you've probably noticed at the Sears parking lot at the mall that we have 20 to 30,000, uh, carts there already that are being assembled. And the company that's doing the assembly, uh, for that is also going to be in charge of doing the delivery to each home. And with that, there's going to be, uh, door hangers, information attached to each cart that kind of shows how the system's going to work. We, we do estimate, our best estimate for, for a go-live date, because we're going to, when we hit the switch and everybody's got their carts, we're going to start doing this. So we've already got trucks that are coming in, we've got the carts that are coming in. Butts Recycling, our partner that's going to be doing the processing here in San Angelo is, uh, is getting their permit, uh, they just got their permit approved this month. And it looks like, uh, just a little bit of administration is left and they've got the building ordered. So our best estimate right now is, uh, mid-July for, uh, starting the carted service. So, um, it looks like the delivery for the carts will be, uh, in the area of, uh, late May, early June. And that'll give people plenty of time to, uh, kick the tires and kind of check out the carts and see how maneuverable they are and such. We just asked that please do not use the carts until the go, go-live date is announced. So we'll keep with the current service until it is, uh, known when we're going to go live. But we do estimate that to be mid-July. So I mentioned the quarterly bulk pickup. Um, there's a five cubic yard limit and a lot of people can't really get their mind around what that looks like, so we'll show what that looks like a little later. Uh, partners also, not only Butts is our partner in this endeavor, but Safe Recycling with Lloyd, uh, heading that up and she has for many years. We're still needing Lloyd at the Safe Recycling Center. As a matter of fact, we'll be recognizing that facility and what she does on their 25th anniversary next week. And we're looking forward to that. Uh, we're going to have, uh, that recognition, uh, with a chamber event, um, on Tuesday, I believe. We also have a free disposal that's going to carry on at the San Angelo landfill for people that don't want to wait, wait for their bulk pickup, uh, quarterly bulk pickup. Uh, you can go to the landfill for free. You just have to show your photo ID, driver's license, it's going to match your water bill with the address and to show that you, you know, that you live where you live and you can get your free disposal at the landfill. The thing that's going to be different is that the people that do go to the landfill, the residents, will not have to dodge our trucks at the working face. So it's going to be safer. We're going to have a convenience center that's going to be near the entrance. It'll be very handy. There's going to be a Republic employee there kind of directing traffic, showing them, you know, which, um, bay goes, what item goes in what bay and, and, uh, so we'll show, we'll show you what that looks like a little later in the presentation as well. This is a, a state of the art automated residential frontload collection truck. If you look on the forks on the front, there's a work bucket there and that's what we, and on the side of it, that yellow, um, looking, yellow colored item is the mechanical arm. And it'll reach out, grab the cart and, and empty the contents in the bucket. So it's going to be the same truck. We'll, we'll use six of these trucks for the, uh, trash collection and about four to five for the recycle collection, depending on participation. We hope the participation is, is very high. So the driver, that what's unique about this setup is the driver can see exactly what's being emptied into the work bucket in front instead of not having really a, a good idea when it's just dumped into the hopper behind him. So he can see and tag those residents that are making, maybe making mistakes on what's recyclable and he can leave them a tag on their cart saying, you know, you put a garden hose in here and those aren't recyclable, that's not a recyclable item. So we can educate the public as we are collecting. Uh, the driver can do that. So I mentioned the tan carts and the green carts. So some big homes like, uh, that are homes that have big yards and, and they don't want to mulch. You know, recycling's going to encourage mulching and it's, uh, and that's a good thing. But some people that want to have the grass clippings, uh, bagged, they're going to probably, they may need more than one, uh, trash cart because it's, it's cart contents only. If you put it outside the cart, the driver's not obligated to take it. So we, if you need an extra cart, you just call city, uh, utility, uh, water bill department and you can, you can get another cart for five bucks a month. So that's, uh, that's a pretty good deal and, and if you need more than, if you need a third one, you can get a third one, Marty. I mean.
Thank you.
So, uh, but the recycle carts, you can, uh, you can get an extra recycle cart, uh, for, for like a buck 28. So those are, those are really inexpensive because we're wanting to encourage recycling. So the location of the carts is, is, is important. So 85% of San Angelo has their garages in the front. And then the areas in, in Southland and southwest part of town, um, have the rear entry garages. Now we can, we can pick up the carts in the southwest part of town in the alleys, no problem. So, um, and you can even use your little cutout areas. You may have to modify them a little bit to allow yourself to maneuver the cart into the little cutout areas and by the fence. But most people will just put them either in their garage, uh, or next to their garage where it's a little handier to, to utilize. We just asked that the, you know, during collection day, by 7:00 AM, you have your cart at the curb. What I do, I'm in one of the piloted areas, I just put it out the evening before and that's okay too. So you can just put it at the curb the evening before, that way you don't have to worry about it the next morning. And if you, if you're in the southwest part of town, then, then, you know, within two feet, just have it right off your driveway. Make sure you don't back into it, um, that it's out of the way. But, uh, you have to have it out of the cutout areas in your fence for us to collect, uh, collect the carts on collection day. Keep them away from the, from the, uh, from the mailboxes, keep them away from parked cars, please, uh, anything that's, that's nearby and keep them about three feet apart so that there's plenty of room for the driver to, to grab, uh, one cart or the other. So you're going to be putting both carts out on the same day. And if, like Johnny, if your collection day is Monday, Thursday, let's say, uh, what we're trying to do and with David Harwell, our, our operation managers, uh, working to get the routes done, your day's going to be either Monday or Thursday. I mean, so we're going to make sure that people, whatever they're accustomed to, that, that their trash pickup day, their collection day is going to be one of their current days. So you put both carts out on the same day and, uh, one truck will come by and pick up the trash, eight or nine o'clock in the morning and then later on, just make sure you don't remove both of them because there's going to be a, a separate truck coming by to pick up the other one. So these carts are big and, uh, you can see that, uh, those could be bags of, uh, grass clippings, it could be trash, but they hold quite a bit, a half a yard of trash. So you're getting basically, uh, a full yard of service on your collection day, which is about what you're getting now. So it's, uh, with, with twice a week. So it's, this is, this is something that recycling is really encouraged because if you, if you have the bulky items like cardboard boxes and you have, um, um, other items like milk jugs, they're going to take up a lot of room. And you may not be able to get everything in just one trash container, so you're kind of encouraged to use both containers and, and, uh, on the trash container itself, um, we encourage bagging. That's the key word is just please bag everything that goes in the trash container.
Robert, what is the, what is the, yeah, what is the size of the blue container that I have right now?
It's the same size. It's 96 gallons, it's a half a yard.
So these aren't bigger? I misunderstood what you said.
Okay. So, um, the all-in-one recycling, um, simply means that you can commingle all your paper, plastic, cardboard and cans into one container. Again, you don't have to bag, uh, the recyclables. The only thing that needs to be bagged on, in the recycling container would be if, if you want to recycle shredded paper. Butts Recycling wants to make sure that we use, they're encouraging us to use the clear plastic bags where they can see what's in it. So we're going to try to, uh, get the word out to use clear plastic bags for the shredded paper. Again, uh, remember clean, empty and dry is, is kind of the motto for, uh, the recycling. What I like about this illustration is this is exactly what's going to be emolded on your, on the lid of your recycle container. So it's going to be like going to a restaurant at Denny's. They've got pictures. So you can see exactly what goes in the recycle cart. It's got it, uh, itemized, but it's got a picture as well and it's going to be right there and it's, and it's, it's just part of the lid. So you have a quick reference as to what goes in there. And again, you don't have to, uh, to bag the stuff that goes in the recycle cart. This simply shows that, uh, you, you just put it all in there and in the recycle cart. It's, um, it's all commingled. Now this, this one here, uh, shows you what people, some people think you can recycle this stuff and you can if you take it to Lloyd at the Safe Drop Off Center for the most part. She takes about anything. But you cannot, to curbside, this, this kind of messes up, kind of gums up the works, uh, with the sorting and the conveyor belts. You can't have anything that's long like Christmas lights, um, garden hoses kind of wreak havoc, uh, with, with recycling, uh, where it gets separated, sort of separated at the recycle, uh, facility at Butts. So no Styrofoam, no HEB bags, please, no coat hangers, uh, in there and no glass. Uh, glass is an item that sometimes we've taken at other locations and typically that's when you have the fully automated, uh, system, but we're going to be doing manual sorting here in San Angelo, at least for the short term. With that, I'll, uh, leave this slide up there. This, these are some frequently asked questions. One that's on there that kind, that's kind of sticking out to me is, so Johnny, you've got, Monday's your collection day and we have Labor Day coming up. So when can you expect your trash to be picked up and your recyclable cart, recycle cart to be picked up? It would be the next day, Tuesday. So which, which, everybody gets bumped today. So the people on Friday would get Saturday pickup. So you're going to get everything picked up that week. So it's, uh, it's going to be something that, that is going to be, you know, we'll get the word out for that as well towards Real Clear as well. So we talked about, uh, the cart placement, um, and some of these others. So if you guys have any questions, I've got my GM, Red Growth is here and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you or staff may have.
Robert, did you show us the convenience center? You're going to show us a picture of the convenience center, uh, as you go out there to the landfill? There you go.
Yeah, that's, uh, the convenience centers is, you can see the bays over on the right, uh, picture. So you, we'll be, you know, putting, there'll be trash in one, there might be metal in another, there could be, um, brush in another one. So if you look on the picture on the left, that's what's beneath. It's the roll-off, uh, construction dumpsters. And so when they get full, then the driver, um, he'll go ahead and, and take it to the right area, whether it's the working face to dispose of the trash, uh, or to take it to, to get ground up if it's brush. And, and one thing that, uh, you can also know is that after we grind the brush, we leave it there, uh, and we mulch it and so that's a free product for, for the public. So after they drop off, uh, whatever they drop off, if they want to grab a yard or two of mulch, it's free and they can take it.
Questions? Start with you, Marty.
All right, ma'am.
Johnny?
Robert, I'm curious, what, what are you going to do with the folks at Bentwood? Aren't they under the pilot now? They all have the blue containers or are you going to switch those out?
Yeah, they're, they're getting switched out, uh, like everybody else. So we can use the blue ones in the county because that's, that's our Republic color and so we have a place for them, no problem.
So the, even the ones, I think most of us have are blue, so we'll get a new one?
Yes.
A green?
And we'll come and pick up the blue one.
Okay.
Shawty?
I've just had several phone calls in my district, the southwest portion of town where's the alley entrances and for some reason, they were under the impression that they had to roll their trash to the front. And I've told them, no, it was not my understanding that their alley pickup would still be. And you answered the question, I just wanted to mention it if they're watching on the TV that, uh, the alley pickups are still just like it is now. just like it is now.
Yes. The only thing is, they can't leave it in the cutout area. They have to kind of put it by their driveway. And so it's, it's going to be just as convenient, basically, as what they've got.
Process.
Let me, let me speak to, I left a couple of slides out. Now, Safe, they'll take the glass, you know? So they'll take the batteries, they'll take, you know, batteries, any size up to car batteries, as long as they're rechargeable. They'll take motor oil, they'll take filters, they'll take the appliances as well. I mean, we'll, we'll take the appliances at the curb on, on the quarterly bulk pickup day. But it's, they'll take all kinds of things that the people, if, if people want to take the time to take it to them. So, but the big event at Safe is going to be the biannual electronics events that we're going to have. So on Earth Day next month, we're going to have an event where we partner with Safe. And we, we have encouraged people, and we'll get the word out, to bring all your electronics that you just have in a closet somewhere, that you're no longer utilizing them because you have the latest and greatest. So you'll have an outlet. And you can see on this list, I mean, they'll take TVs, they'll take keyboards, anything that's electronic. Now, Anthony Wilson is one that we're happy to have in our corner to help us with the town hall meetings. So we've got, we want to make sure that we have town hall meetings in each of your districts. So Liz, we already have you booked for May 28th, 6:00 PM. It's a Thursday. We hope you're there, so it'll encourage people to come.
I've told Mr. Wilson that I would be there.
Very good. And so as we, as we get the other ones, this kind of shows some locations that we're, we're going to look to, to set meetings up at, to kind of go through this and, and answer any questions one-on-one with the public. So that'll, that'll be good. And we've already done a couple of shows with Denise Blumquist over at Twoster Communications. And we did just one just yesterday, as a matter of fact. So we're, we're on the radio as well. With, with Anthony's help, we'll, and with the Standard Times' help, we're going to also get the word out on the recycling, the educational piece through big, you know, half-page ads, quarter-page ads, direct mail. I left some samples with Brian on, on an example of a mailer that we're going to be sending out, but there'll be other ones as well. So we'll, we'll be doing PSAs on, on radio and television and newsprint, like I mentioned before. And Anthony even said that he would get on the social media, Facebook and Twitter. We're going to get our general manager and Anthony to do a, to one-on-one interview on the government, city government channel. And he'll ask some questions of Ray, and then we'll answer questions kind of like what we're doing here. And it'll be on the government channel as well. So, and he'll set up some, some, some meetings with the local Fox affiliate, the local KSAN and, and KLST as well. So we're, we're looking forward to just doing a blitz on any piece of media that's out there that we can, you know, try to educate the public on the new service, including, and we've already done it with the water bill inserts. So we're trying to, anything that you guys come up with and recommend, we would listen to as well.
Don, did you have comments on this or questions?
No, sir.
Ms. Elizabeth?
Comments? Robert, as you know, when I was running for council only a year ago, this was a pretty hot topic. And unfortunately for you, I heard a lot of negative feedback over the proposed changes in the trash service. And I think that makes me somewhat a receiver of, of continued criticism because I didn't vote for it. I have, I keep getting comments about why is this taking so long? We kind of all went through this process, and we were told, I thought, that recycling was going to start in March, and then it was April. And now I see it's go live in July.
Right.
And the contract itself, I believe, commenced in, was it August?
July.
Jul, July.
August 1st.
August 1st.
Right.
So it, we're looking at one month shy of a year implementing something. So you know that there was some public distrust in this process, right or wrong? And not necessarily because of anything you did or anyone in this room did, but there just was. And so I would say that I'm disappointed that it's taken eleven months to implement this, or at least my constituents and those outside of the district have conveyed the same thing. It's, it just seems like it's more of the same. It's not what we've been told. And so I hope for your sake that July is your, is your go-live date.
Well, yeah.
And just know that I'm going to sit here and say every time there's a missed deadline, I'm going to say something of the like, because I can tell you that's the input I'm getting.
Well, I can certainly understand that. And, and it's something that, you know, there's, there were a lot of moving parts on trying to get this thing going. And, I mean, we've, when you put in truck orders for twelve brand-new trucks, that takes some, some time. And the carts, we had, we had, you know, storm events, we've had the planning commission recently approving the permit for Butts to, to basically double their size. So they had to jump through a lot more hoops than, than we thought originally. So the planning commission just this month approved their permit. And so there's, there's just been some things that, that, that were kind of out of our control somewhat. We could have probably done some, some things maybe a little sooner, but it's, it's something that we're going to, July, it's going to happen, so.
Well, you know that the public or the cit, the citizen really doesn't care about how long it took to get a truck. They know what they're paying.
Right.
And they're, they've been told about an enhanced service that they're supposed to be receiving. And so I just caution you that, to me, you've missed a deadline. You've missed a pretty critical deadline. And as long as I sit here, I'm sure that I'm going to get the same calls if it happens again.
Now, that's why we're here, and that's why we're going to do the town hall meetings, is to, to let people know, you know, that we're on track. And there could be information change from one town hall meeting to the next to, you know, as, as it comes in. But, but it's, as of now, that's why we're presenting today, is that we have a firm, we have a permit that Butts can have to, to modify their facility by, you know, I mean, it's just a major undertaking that they're, they're going through right now. And so it involved engineering, it involved a lot more than we didn't, you know, when we were trying to get this contract done.
But when you get the contract and you put a price to it, and you get paid, you're supposed to perform.
Right. And, and we are performing. We're pretty much doing take-all service. They're basically getting a cleanup every week with the service that we're doing right now. So the recycling, you know, that's something that, that we're ready for now. And if we could have been ready for it earlier, we would have done it earlier, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I really don't want you putting that recycling in our landfill. That was the important thing about this. We had fourteen years on our landfill, and now it's down to what, about twelve with all of the, we do not want you to put recycling in our landfill to pick up earlier. We want you to do it, I want you to do it right, so.
That's why we all need to get on this glass thing, though. The glass thing is still a critical piece.
Charlotte?
When I mentioned the phone calls I'd been getting, they were all happy, they're anxious. They want the trash cans, they've seen them there at the mall, and they're very anxious to get started in, in the recycling. But I've, I've not received any complaints, as Ms. Grinstaff has. The, just understanding how it's going to work and the town halls, I am having a town hall meeting on April 9th, but it's already packed with a lot of development. I don't think we've got enough time, but I would like to schedule with you as soon as possible for my district for a town hall meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
And be happy to do that, and then answer the people's questions, just let them know. Appreciate the problems that you've incurred. We knew going in with changes and starting a recycling, that there were going to be some hiccups, and some hiccups getting started. And it's, it's a process.
It's a process. Thank you very much.
Further comments from council? If there are any public comments, we'll take them at this time. If not, is that your presentation, Robert?
That's it. So the town hall meetings will be next, and we look forward to those.
And continue your, your education. I think that's the most important thing. This is brand-new to every one of us, and we knew there was going to be some problems. Keep your education going, please, sir, and so the people will know what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor. Will do.
Thank you, Robert. Have any public comment? I'll take comments. Someone wants to make one? Come to the front. Identify yourself. You've got three minutes, sir.
I'm Fred Preston with Butts Recycling, and I thought maybe I'd address just a little bit of Elizabeth's answers. We've been working in partnership with the city as well as Republic on this whole recycle thing. This is a big event. It is a first time ever out in West Texas. So it's something you don't want to just jump into. So on Republic's behalf, we've been diligent on this since October, trying to put these plans together and make this work. It has been in effect and going.
Diligent in August 1 would have made me happier, just if you want to look at the calendar.
But on our part, as far as putting this thing together and making this thing work for the city of San Angelo, this is something we want to put together right, that once we get this going, that it will continue to go and work properly for everybody. So on the glass, in the big recycling center, that's not an issue there because everything's automated. You don't have a lot of hands on it and stuff like that. Plus, they've got these bigger areas and stuff to work with, and machinery that takes care of that. We had to pull that out. We can't have that in a hand-sort system. That's why we want to help support Safe on this. Continue glass, that's important. Goodfellow does a lot of that with us. So we like to support and continue the glass part. The other thing is, plastic bags get into these systems. If everybody has to open a plastic bag in recycling, it defeats the purpose. We're trying to keep the cost down in this facility and everything that we're doing with this. So it's important that, with the education that Republic's going to be doing us, we're going to help them in that on, on what works and what doesn't work on this plan. And we're going to change things up if we need to as we go. But we're here to support the city on this first and make this thing work. But we just got through a major hurdle that we ran into, he's talking about in our permit process. There was an issue with our street, West Leffler Street, if you've ever seen our facility. That's been there since nineteen fifty-four or whatever. We've been there since ninety-four, never had a problem with it, but it's not paved. So we had to get a variance to pass that because Butts Recycling can't afford to pave a street to put this project in. So we passed that hurdle, and now we're, we've ordered our building, and we're in the process of completing the rest of it, so we're ready to go.
They received a variance? So they don't have to have a paved street? Is that true?
Yeah, we got a variance from planning. I'll show that.
Interesting.
Any questions?
Questions?
I, I just have a comment with recycle. I was watching a documentary on TV here real quick about recycled material, and it sure would be nice if Roland, are you out there, if you could maybe entertain or find someone who wants to purchase recycled materials and make, they're making railroad ties now out of the, the plastics, the paper, the wood products. It's just compressing into a railroad tie, and there's a big demand for them out there. So I'd love to see us try to bring a business to use our recycled material and make a product that is for sale.
Most of our products that we collect go directly to the people that make those things.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate the fact that Republic is working with a local San Angelo business and the amount of money that Butts is putting into this. It's, it's a tremendous amount of money to keep this, keep as much local as we can. Any other further comment before we move on on this? Thank you very much, Robert, for the, for the report. It has been asked that we move number fifteen forward. There's a lot of people here that are here for the columbarium, in fact, probably half of our audience. I know that Ms. Fluger is also here for the wellness. I would like to move fifteen up. Fourteen is also important.
I need the planning items before lunch because of my own schedule. This is spring break.
Can we stay in order? I would like to pull a columbarium up since there are, since there are many people here. That's just me. So what do you, what do you want to do, Marty? You want to pull it up or stay where we, where we are?
I, I don't, I don't have a problem pulling it up because I don't think it'll take long. But I think we, with the understanding that we don't take lunch until we, we get Ms. Grinstaff's stuff done because she was nice enough to reschedule her spring break.
I'm satisfied with that. Charlotte?
Thank you.
Don?
That's fine.
You all right with that, Elizabeth?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Let's move, let's move fifteen up. That is a columbarium. This is consideration of approving a construction services contract with Midtext of Texas, Inc. in substantially the attached form to construct the columbarium, columbarium for in an earnment, C E M O one-one-four, and related site work at the historic Fairmount Cemetery in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute said contract. I don't see David Knapp who is going to take this one.
Well, we moved it up on him, so I don't think it's here. So let me pull it up.
Johnny left.
I bet he's glad we moved it up.
And all I request is, if you do do that, if you know you're going to do it, if you give us a forewarning, we'll contact them and let them know to be here. Usually, they watch online. In short...
I'll take the hit on that one.
He's running wherever he is.
In short, on this item, this is a contract that council has to proceed you designated funds in the past for this project. So David, of course, has been working with Midtext to...
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. Has been working with this item as far as bringing it forward to council. So today, you're considering, considering the contract itself. You see the dollar amount. We discussed with you the fact that the project came in over the initial budget, so staff worked through that item with Midtext and identified some areas to cut. At the end of the day, what is being proposed is that you look at adding some additional funds to cover that expense. There are two items you'll notice there. One, that Friends of Fairmont is bringing to the table, a total of an additional thirty-six thousand, four seventy to the project, and they're asking the city to bring an additional eighteen thousand, seven dollars to the project. What that will specifically cover from the city's standpoint is some niches. If you do the math on that, you see in your background report that it equates to quite a bit of revenue that comes in through the sale of those niches. So it is a, a good economic approach as far as the return you will get on those dollars. So we're recommending to move forward and to approve that.
And it, it is an investment. It's an investment in our cemetery.
Well, and with that said, I didn't cover that, but one of the challenges that the board at Fairmont has been given is to extend the life of the cemetery. And while we've reclaimed lots and we've resold, this particular aspect is not something we've done in the past. So it really gives us the advantage to extend an income source for the future.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, it's all, I mean, we, it's always difficult when a project comes in over budget, but we keep seeing that in this bidding environment. But I'm very pleased that the board is willing to put in as much of their own funding as they are. And so in, in light of that, the, the portion that they're asking of the city is roughly fifty percent of their own contribution. So because of that, and because of the, the importance of this project, as you say, to the future life of the cemetery, which is, it's such an asset in our community, I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Do have a, Elizabeth has moved to approve it as presented. We do have a second by Charlotte. Any other comments from council on this? Don?
I would just like to, to thank the, the board out there. I mean, they do yeoman's work. It's all volunteer, and, and, I mean, I think that, that they're to really be commended for, for coming up with this and getting it going.
And I'd, I'd like to say, I, I think it's great what they do, and, and a person would be crazy up here to vote against it right now because they'd have to get out that door. And those ladies have talked to me before.
And I'll say amen to that as well.
Mayor, I will point out that from a revenue stream, Tina and Morgan looked at that. There are some options that we can do as far as the general fund reserve or other possibilities, and if you want to give them the flexibility to handle that.
We'll be bringing back a budget amendment to you for the contribution from Friends of Fairmount for $36,000, and together with this motion, we'll also include in that $18,000 from general fund balance to satisfy the project.
I think this is wonderful, and I thank you all as well. You have done a... Very proud of what you've done with Fairmount Cemetery. Public comment, then I'm going to call for the vote. It has been, the motion has been made that we approve this as presented. It has been seconded. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Put a 5-0 on that one. Thank you. All right. We will... Let us now go back, and we'll pick up our... Starting with number 11. Second public hearing, consideration to adopting an ordinance of City of San Angelo, Texas, amending Code of Ordinances of City of San Angelo, Chapter 12, Exhibit A, zoning ordinance by number 1, amending Article 3 Use Regulations, Section 310 Use Table, industrial use categories, adding a use designated as frac sand proppant transloading warehouse operation permitted only in heavy manufacturing zoning district. Number 2, amending Article 3 Use Regulations, Section 316, industrial use categories by redesignating subparts A through F as subparts B through G, respectively, adopting a new subpart A frac sand proppant transloading and warehousing operations providing characteristics, accessory uses, and exceptions. Number 3, amending Article 4 Specific Use Standards by redesignating standards number 410 through 426 as Sections 411 through 427, respectively, adopting new Section 410 entitled frac sand proppant transloading warehousing operations, establishing general and operational standards. Number 4, amending Article 8 Definitions, Section 804, defined terms to create definitions for frocculent, frac sand, frac sand, proppant-related waste materials, frac sand, proppant transloadings and warehousing operations, operator and proppant, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Why do you do that to me?
I think they did that on purpose is what I'm thinking.
In my old thick North Angelo tongue and having to wrap it around those words. Ms. Garrett, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Rebecca Garrett, Planning Manager. The reason this was moved to second reading was because of the changes that were made on the first reading, and so we thought to err on the side of caution. We'll go ahead and put it as a public hearing, but everything that you've seen before you that's been included as the backup were the changes that were made at the last meeting where the conditional use for all intents and purposes was removed. It's still going to be an allowed use only in the heavy manufacturing district. And so instead of going through the whole slide, you've read it perfectly. The use category will be frac sand proppant transloading and warehousing operations. We've created use regulations, characteristics, accessory uses, and exceptions, in general and operation standards, and those six definitions which you read so eloquently to begin with. So I'm going to go ahead and end the presentation there, and if you have any specific questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Elizabeth, you were the one that asked that conditional use be removed, and we voted that way. Are you happy with this one?
She's flipping rather quickly. I'm happy. Let me ask you, and the reason I brought it up, is this the item that speaks to paved truck routes?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So I'm going to have a problem with that if we just discussed the trash trucks at the recycling center not having to be paved. And I know one's an onsite and one's a right-of-way, but I see an inconsistency here in our care about pavement and vehicles.
So one, what you saw previously was a variance that was requested by the applicant to not pave a right-of-way, and that variance goes before the Planning Commission. Anything that happens there is subject to appeal by any aggrieved party, so it can come here. So anyone to this point can still agree that and come to the city council to have that matter re-discussed. In this case, because it's located within the zoning ordinance, that variance, if a variance is ever requested for that, will go before the zoning board of adjustment. The only appeal is not city council, so they would have to go to a court.
I understand, and I appreciate what you've done, and I think it was very smart of you to put it on the regular agenda for second reading because there was substantial change. I'm just, and I'm very ready to approve something today. I'm just feeling as if now there's a double standard on this issue. Does anyone else have any input?
I don't have a problem with it as it is written.
The only thing that I feel I hate that they started the precedence of, you know, letting the street go. You know, I think we'll... Or the previous councils have worked hard in getting our streets paved, and for us to let one slide like that, I don't like it a little bit. But that's kind of water under the bridge, in my opinion only, maybe. But I don't have any real heartburn with this because they knew ahead of time that they would have to, and that's pretty much been acceptable to them.
I'll accept the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made. We accept it as presented. It has been seconded. Do I have further counsel comment? Public comment? Come on, Turner.
Yes, my name is still Jim Turner, and one of the things that I hope you remember as you go forward, that this is really a temporary solution that needs a long-term solution and review of a lot of the zoning and use codes that you have, so we don't have problems coming up like we recently had with frac sand, because this is not by any means the only possible way we can have this type of problem coming up again. We need to take and review the zoning regulations and get really smart about it. If we don't, we're going to see this again as industry and technology and other things happen that are going to bring up this same type of issue again and again. And I don't want the zoning board to have to take and do what they had to do the last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Further public comment? I will call for the vote. Motion has been made. Do we accept it as presented? It has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Put a 1, 2, 3, 4 to 1 on that one, please, Brian. Did you need to step out for a minute, Charlotte? Dan, is it all right?
We have no quorum.
We started with a quorum.
We lose a quorum.
We have to maintain a quorum.
I will speak very slowly.
Just wait.
Just wait.
We have to wait till she gets back.
All right. They tell me for legal purposes that we have to halt the meeting at 11:28 and reconvene the meeting at 11:32. So the meeting has now been reconvened. We will move on to item number 12, which is the first public hearing, and it's consideration of introduction of an ordinance, amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A, zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, Z1438, Fred Partlow. An ordinance, amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, Texas, which said Exhibit A of Chapter 12 adopts zoning regulations, use districts, and a zoning map in accordance with a comprehensive plan by changing the zoning and classification of the following property to wit, generally located on the northeast corner of Old Ballinger Highway and Covington Road, and specifically described as approximately 175 acres out of 501.327 acres of land out of J. Poland Survey 3, abstract number 5130, J. Pointevette Survey 1113, abstract 4873, and J. A. Eggersen Survey 2, abstract number 4894, and described in Exhibit A and attached to correction special warranty deed from Doris Schwartz Block to Michael J. Block, trustee of Wilbert B. Block Family Trust, filed for record on 10/527 as an instrument numbered 640460, and official public records for real property, O P R R P, in Tom Green County, Texas, a request for approval of a zone change from Ranch and Estates, R and E, to Heavy Manufacturing, M H, providing for severability and providing a penalty. Ms. Garrett?
Good morning. The next case is Z1438, rezoning in the name of Fred Partlow. It is 475 acres located on the northwest corner of Old Ballinger Highway and U.S. Highway 277. It is in Single Muggenburg District Number 4 in the Pauline neighborhood. Future land use of this site is industrial, and you'll remember this site from the annexation, which we recently did, which was a larger piece, but this is a small snippet on that immediate north... Yes, northwest corner. The zoning, as you stated previously, is ranch and estate, and the proposed zoning is heavy manufacturing, which is consistent with the future land use designation of industrial. Staff is recommending approval to the Heavy Manufacturing District for the following reasons. Before you end in your staff reports, as I stated previously, it is consistent with the future land use designation of industrial. It's also consistent with some of the uses that are out there, including but not limited to the landfill. Eight notifications were sent out within a 200-foot radius. One notification was received in response, in favor. That response is located in your staff reports, and I also have a copy in my file. On March 9, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for rezoning to the Heavy Manufacturing Zoning District, and so the action requested today is to approve case Z1438 for rezoning from the Ranch and Estate District to the Heavy Manufacturing District and adopt the ordinance on first reading. This concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Well, we've been through this many, many times in the last couple of months, and this is, my opinion, an excellent thing. Anyone want... Any comments? Anybody want to move to approve? Don, this is your area.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. I do have a motion to approve as presented. I do have a second.
Marty keeps trying to talk.
I just have one... I have a question. Two questions, actually. One, how many acres did we annex earlier?
Originally, we annexed 500 acres.
The whole thing?
500, 175 acres. Beg your pardon.
So it's the same acreage?
I'm having a small...
Yes, it is.
Yes.
This is 175 acres. 500 acres was the original larger piece.
But we only annexed 175?
No, no, no. We annexed this corner piece. The 500 acres was a part of the development, was a part of the developers' agreement, which is what we did the original notification for. We annexed 175 acres in, but it's part of a larger 500-acre piece which reached all the way to Model?
Modal.
Modal.
So in short, we are annexing what they have requested. There is a larger tract that's under the development agreement.
Agreement.
It's just they're not proposing to develop that at this point.
Exactly.
So they haven't requested that we do. It stays under the same agreement.
It stays under the same agreement, but it's still subject, if they change anything, they are subject to the same annexation development agreement.
Okay.
So the 175 acres is what was annexed in, but the 500 acres, which was the original piece up to Modal, is still subject to that developers' agreement. That has not gone away.
Okay. All right.
That answered, sir?
Yeah. That's good. Yeah, I'm good.
Any further comment, Council? Do I have public comment on this item? I'm going to call for the vote, and the motion has been made that we accept it as presented. It has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Put a 5-0 on that one, please, sir. Number 13, first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article 82000, Building and Construction Related Fees of the City of San Angelo Code of Ordinances Related to Outside Consultant Plan Check Service Fees. Mr. Torres, you are on, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Council members. My name is Al Torres. I'm the building official for the City of San Angelo, and as you said, I'm here to propose that we adopt or change the fee schedule to allow for us to charge fees for, to cover the city's costs on third-party plan reviews. I think most of you are pretty familiar with the process of plan reviews, so I'm just going to real quickly go over some of these slides. As you know, plans are submitted originally for review from us, from our division for compliance with the building codes. We send those review comments out to the applicant. The applicant then responds and resubmits if necessary to ensure compliance, and then we issue a building permit. Currently, right now, on commercial plan reviews, we have been facing a six-to-eight week review time. We're working on getting that down, but that's what we've been facing recently. Secondary reviews, when they resubmit, we typically add another week to look at those resubmitted comments. We don't put them back at the front of the queue, but it does take a little bit of time to look at those and make sure they've complied. Our goal right now is to reduce that review time, our review time, to 15 business days maximum, actually even less, but we're working on that 15 days first. Some of the reasons for those is, of course, over the past six months in particular, we've undergone a string of staff changes. We've had staff members turned over and created new positions and brought new people in, and we're trying to train new staff members. In addition to that, the volume of commercial work has exponentially increased over the last three years. We're doing quite a bit more commercial work than we've done in all the time that I've been here, anyway. And then we've identified things in development process that we've decided we can do better, and we're working on that. We... One of our positions that we've created, her job specifically, is to improve the development process, and so we are implementing, and we've already changed some of the things that we're doing to make that review faster, and we are looking at even more changes coming up. Some of the solutions to those issues, again, as of this month, in fact, as of today, we should be fully staffed on plan reviews. We're making a final offer this afternoon. So we should be fully staffed. Finally, of course, it takes a little time to train these people. We've also, as I mentioned, taken steps to implement, to improve the development process itself. We're going to do electronic plan review. Mobile field devices are being implemented. All that's being done as we speak. We've taken, we've made changes in how plans are submitted and how... Basically, we're taking a hard look at how everything is done to try to improve our process and make it faster and more efficient. Now, in the meantime, we've had a lot of people from the development community that want to know, you know, what can we do to alleviate this problem immediately. One item that we've looked at is outside consultant plan reviews. There are businesses out there that exist that they provide construction document reviews for municipalities. We... There are five that I'm aware of. We have been looking, working closely with a couple of them. ICC Plan Review Services and Bureau Veritas are the two companies we've been mostly looking at. The cost of those reviews are paid directly to the consultants. City of San Angelo does not pay for those reviews, so this isn't an issue of us contracting with these companies to do reviews for us. They are doing the reviews as a third-party service. These parties typically guarantee their turnaround time in 15 days, which is three weeks. So for larger projects, this would give a developer an option to, rather than wait for us to get to his project, they can send it directly to these companies and get their review done in three weeks maximum. Their turnaround time for subsequent reviews typically is five days guaranteed. The... An important note to make, one of the... You know, we've vetted this through the Development Task Force and through the development community, and some of the questions that they've had that we're addressing is, one of the biggest questions is if a company in Dallas or a company in Illinois or, you know, does a plan review for us, are they doing this to standards that are not right for San Angelo? So the answer is no. They are doing, they're doing their plan reviews to our standards. The first thing they do is they visit with me to find out what our adopted codes are, what are our local ordinances, what are our local amendments, you know, that we've made here. So they do their reviews tailored to what our requirements are here. In addition, once they do their plan review, they are essentially sending their comments to us, but we have the final say here in San Angelo. The Fire Marshal and myself, we are the local authority having jurisdiction, and so we have the final say on any permits that are issued. So say they send a comment, you know, that has something to do with the sprinkler in the building. If we have a local amendment, or we, in our opinion, they've met the intent of the code, even if the comment exists on their review service, we have the final say on whether that applies to the project here or not. So, you know, to put those developers at ease, it's still going to be our say here on how we do business here in San Angelo. And then, of course, we will issue the permit once all items have been addressed to our satisfaction, not to the reviewer's satisfaction, but to our satisfaction. Now, plan review fees through these consultants is very similar to what we charge for a plan review. Typically, they're higher when you go through ICC or Bureau Veritas. The big difference is that our permit fee includes the cost of inspections, administrative costs to, you know, get those inspections recorded and do all the overhead that's required to get that permit administered. The plan review fee that's paid to the third-party plan review services is strictly for the plan review. So we need to figure out some way to recoup our cost so we're not doing inspections for free when somebody chooses to go through these third-party services. So we did a study, or I did a study... So we did a study, or I did a study, typical number of inspections for different kinds of jobs, you know, what it takes to, the average amount of time inspectors spend at each inspection, what are their salaries, what's it costing us to put, you know, to do these inspections? And what we found is that the cost of inspections runs up to 15% of the typical plan review fee. So what we're coming for you today is to request that we modify the fee schedule to allow us to charge 15% of that plan review fee, the third-party plan review fee, and we'll work with these companies. I've discussed each of them, how we're gonna do that, how we're gonna set up that policy, and basically, any fees that they charge, they route everything through us. We're not, we're not the ones charging it, but they're gonna route everything through us, so we're aware of any fees that are being charged. 15% of those fees will be paid as a permit fee to the city of San Angelo to cover cost of inspections and administration.
I might add to Al's presentation. One of the things that he mentioned about the time, the six-to-eight weeks, but the staff there gets total credit for, and you, for implementing some new positions and funding. But, for instance, in the residential side of it right now, as of last week, we are back to a 24-hour turnaround. So you're seeing that trend changing. Here, we're trying to address the commercial, and while we intend to get the commercial review back into a reasonable timeframe, this simply adds another safety net to what we have to offer, and if we're behind, it gives someone an option. If for some reason we have a major turnover of staff, it gives us yet another safety net to fall upon within this commercial component. We also visited with the home builders yesterday. They primarily are focused on residential, but they also had reviewed this and are okay with what, the representatives that we met with yesterday, with what's being proposed.
So this is, in fact, just another option. They can, if they want, if they want to speed up the process, if they want to pay 15% more, then they can go to the outside and speed it up.
That is, that is correct. We are hoping that very soon, we're gonna be back to the three-week turnaround time ourselves, anyway, so why would anybody pay to go somewhere else when they can, you know, get it through us? But we want it as an option for the development community so that if we find ourselves in this position again, that gives somebody a chance to.
And I'm confident that we will get our own department back into, back into the, to the, to the, the good turnaround time.
We're well in our way.
And then we don't need these guys, and it'll just be something else that we have as a tool.
Correct.
Appreciate you, Al. Charlotte?
I have a question with reference to when you issue a permit to a general contractor.
Yes, ma'am.
And the work is being done, you do the inspections, and then the general contractor calls for the final inspection, and they're told, no, you can't call for the inspection. It has to be a plumber or an electrician. Why is that?
Really, it's because we have a lot of general contractors that are calling in for inspections, and we show up at the job site, and the plumber will say, oh, I'm not ready, because the general contractor, he's pushing the overall timeframe for the project, and he's trying to get everybody out there in a hurry. So we, as a policy, we require the, and that's just for subcontractor work. The subcontractor, these are licensed trades that are licensed through the state of Texas. They are responsible for the work that they are doing, so we request that they call in inspections for their own, for their own work. Does that make sense?
But the general contractor of record, that's on the builder's materials mechanic's lane and is doing the work and directing the subcontractors, you're telling me that you don't allow him to call for the final permit? It just seems unreasonable.
No, ma'am. The general contractor does call for the final inspection. Each of the subcontractors has their own permit.
Right.
So we cannot, we don't allow him to call for his final inspection until the other subcontractors have completed their work and gotten their finals.
Okay, I understand that.
Once they've gotten their finals, then the general contractor says, okay, all of my subcontractor's work is complete, we're ready for a final inspection, and then we come, but the general contractor does that, and we come out and do their final inspection.
After the meeting, I'll discuss one up on 40th Street with you.
Sure. Sure.
Do I have further comment from counsel? Don?
I have several. The people that you're gonna sub out with, what are their certifications?
They're, they're all ICC certified, and we have a list. We're creating, we're creating a policy, basically, that on how we're gonna handle each of these.
Are they also certified in NFPA because of the electric code?
I, no. Because NFPA, basically, that's all done through the ICC now. It's, ICC doesn't even have an electrical code. They've adopted the NEC. So that includes NEC certifications. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, so those people will be done.
Yes.
All right. What about specialized permits?
They will probably still have to go through, like fire sprinklers and things like that. Yeah, they'd still have to go through the Farm Marshal's office.
Okay. So you're just talking about, basically, general construction?
Yes, they have a very specific list of reviews that they'll do.
Fire alarms, sprinkler systems, all those things.
Yeah, they'll, they'll do the fire, fire code, but they don't, and ICC, for instance, does fire sprinkler reviews if you request them, but that's a separate review.
Okay. So would they be, be available for that if they wanted to do everything?
Yes, that's something that would be available. I think Ross Coleman probably want his people, you know, keep, still keep overview of those, but it would be available.
Okay. Well, what if there's a conflict out in the field? You still have final say over that?
Yes. Any comments that are made, we still, you know, Ross and I are still the local authority having jurisdiction, so we still have the final say over anything, anything done here.
Okay. I, as a contractor, I send this out, I pay my 15%. The plan gets approved by your office, I bring it back. There's supposed to be a door over there per the plan. Your field inspector says, no, it's supposed to be 30 feet down that wall. How does that handle?
The same way we handle it now. I mean, we go back and look at the code, and if it's something that was missed in the initial inspection, it's still, you know, you can't get away from doing something that's required by the code simply because it was missed in a review. Of course, we'd have to show you that that's, that's the requirement.
Okay.
Are you wondering about liability of the third-party reviewer in that situation?
Well, I, yes.
Well, but we still, we still do the final, like I said, the liability is still, we're doing the final review and saying, yes, these comments apply, or no, these comments do not apply, so.
Well, and also, along with that, more, a conflict as far as, as a contractor, I've already got that framed out. It's costing me $5,000, and now you want me to move it 30 feet down the road.
Right, and that was one of my concerns, too, was when we first looked at this, or when the subject was first brought up, was what happens if we don't agree with whoever's doing the review? But in this case, like I said, the reviewers are basically, it's almost like the adopted codes that we have, you know, their recommendations, they're saying, this is what we see as items that are not complying with the code, and then it's up to Ross and I to determine whether we agree with that or not. And for the most part, they're pretty thorough. I mean, you know, I've looked at some of these reviews, and they're, they're very, very detailed, very thorough, so for the most part, everything they do is right out of the book. But again, sometimes there's things that are done locally that, you know, we will...
That was my next question, local amendments?
Correct. Yeah, that's...
They'll have a copy of it.
They have those, yes, they have those. The first step they'll do is, and again, anybody that we work with, ICC, Bureau Veritas already, they will visit with me first and ask us what our local amendments are. We provide them with copies of all that. What codes do we have adopted, you know, what other, even down to what are some of our philosophies and how we look at these, and they try to do everything as we would do it here.
Well, you have, one of your reviewers review their review?
Well, we're, not, we may do that as a quality control kind of thing, but we'll definitely review their comments. You know, it means, there's, we're not gonna go through the whole plan and do another review subsequent to theirs, although, like I said, we might do that as quality control, but we will always look at the comments that they submit to make sure that we're comfortable with those comments, so that we don't have problems down the road in the field.
Okay. Move for approval as presented.
Second.
Do have a motion to approve as presented. I do have a second. Do I have further comment from counsel? Do we have public comment on this item? We'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Put a 5-0 on that one, please, Brian. 11:53. Y'all wanna take up 14? Do you want a break?
14.
Who?
14.
Okay. 14, update on participation and status of employee wellness program. Presentation by Cheryl Fluger, Business Development Marketing Director at SACMC. Janet Charlesworth and Mary Solomon, Wellness Coordinators, SACMC. Welcome.
Just a quick introduction. I'm Veronica Sanchez, HR Manager. Unfortunately, Lisa couldn't be here today to do the intro, so as you all know, San Angelo Community Medical Center was contracted for management of our wellness program, so we've got Cheryl Fluger here today, Mary Solomon, and Janet Charlesworth, who are gonna provide you with the update of that program.
Welcome, Ms. Fluger.
Hi, thank you, mayor and council. We're glad to be here for the fourth annual wellness screening update. We have interesting news. Can you hear me there better? Interesting today, so we're gonna give you a little bit different type of a report today. Just a high-level kind of update that we found from this report. You had 99.6 participation this year, which is excellent. You've had that going for a couple of years, and those are the employed people that are under city insurance. One thing that did jump out this year, which was an interesting fact, your, the blood pressure score jumped pretty far out on the chart for us today, so we're going back and reviewing those statistics. We're gonna re-screen some people and whatever, but that's an interesting deal, because, you know, generally, one in three people don't even know that they have high blood pressure, and that's falling true with this, with this particular group, too. We do think that during the screenings that we might have had some allergies going on and also people maybe not taking blood pressure medicine the day of the screening, so we are re-verifying and rechecking all of that, but that's something for us to look at. Then the other thing that really, really jumped out at what we were seeing was that the WELL program, the Wellness at Work program, WELL program, is working. It's really working, so we're going to try to concentrate on that today. Highlights for all employees, just for you all to get a good, a good look at that. The risk factors, when you have a lot of risk factors, that's where your risk for the employees, excuse me, should I do, I should be doing that. Sorry. Okay. The risk factors with the employees, that, you know, you jump from one to maybe over five risk factors, that's where your health of your employees come in, that they really see a difference, and it's also where your healthcare cost can go maybe five times the amount when you have a lot of risk factors. So the people that had five or more risk factors, that's been a group that we've had from 123, 120 employees, 110 last year, that jumped down to, or went down to 82 employees. So that, from two years ago, that's a 33% decrease. That is excellent. It's huge, 'cause it makes such an impact with the individual employees, and then it also makes an impact with your financial impact. The smokers in the organization, we also decreased that by 15% in the past year. Now, we did hire 10 new smokers, so that would even be further down, so that's something to look at in the future, but that also has such an impact on your, on your health. And then the improved wellness score overall, that 45% of your employees overall did improve their health wellness score, and that's compared to 42% last year. Wrong way. I wanna, I wanna go back to what we were saying about the people that have participated in the challenges versus the general population. We had 58 people that actually recorded scores and actually participated in these challenges that we're gonna do, and even though that seems like a small group, we can see stark differences between what was actually happening with the larger group of employees. So we chose this year to concentrate on those and show you what could be done with those. Wellness score overall is 67 for your general employees. If you participated in the challenges, and those 58 people, their overall wellness score was 77, and that's a huge improvement. The people that did improve on their scores, 61% of the WELL people compared to 45% of those who didn't. Then you go to the obese category, and you've got 43% of the non-WELL people that are in the obese category compared to just half, 21% of the WELL people. And you would look at the people in those two different groups, all the people in the WELL group are very similar in challenges of health, starting with obesity, starting with high blood pressure, whatever. They have the same challenges that the, the regular employees have, so you're not starting with a pristine group, you're starting with people that do have health challenges. Then you look at nutrition, same thing, it's about double. The WELL people are doing much better with their nutrition. Blood pressure, again, was something that we were really concerned about, and where you're looking at pre-hypertensive people, with the WELL employees, you've got 56% compared to 37% of your general population, but then when you get in trouble, it's the hypertension. It's the people that are already diagnosed with blood pressure problems, and that's only 7% of the WELL people compared to 37%. Same thing with fitness, you can look at those going all the ways, all the way down. Age and ethnicity did not play a part. Those were all very comparable in all the groups. Gender, on the people that did not participate, it's 81% of the men did not participate, so their women participate as a whole a lot more. So it's interesting just to look at participation and real health improvement. So what is WELL? Just to kind of remind you, you know, that we're doing, you start with the screenings that we do every September, October. We screen over 700 employees. It takes about two months to screen those. We do that with a annual questionnaire that they take, but then you also have biometric data that takes blood pressure, it takes a blood panel, and you're able to see their actual scores. So if people participate in WELL, they're doing challenges that are set up that you all voted on last year to do point systems, and with that point system, they're able to earn a day or two off of, and that's working very well. This is a voluntary system at this moment, and it's, it's working well, so. I'm gonna turn this over to Janet Charlesworth and Mary Solomon, and Janet is our fitness expert, Mary is our dietitian and our clinical expert, and the two of those together are taking some excellent care of the employees in the city, along with a wonderful committee that's been formed from the city. We wanna give kudos to department heads or department representatives that have come together to give ideas to, for the WELL, for the WELL committee. They are implementing, and then they're carrying back information and communication back about this program, so kudos to you all. I'll come back to that in a minute, but I'm gonna let them tell you a little bit more about the program.
Good afternoon. We're, Mary and I are excited to talk to you about the WELL program. It was a program that we introduced last April, as Cheryl said, and it was where they could earn points to get a free day off. If they earned 400 points, they got one day off, and if they earned 700, they got two days off. And how they earned points was participating in challenges, doing a walking program, whether it was their own personal walking program or going to a health fitness center. They also got points for doing preventive screenings, such as going to the dentist or getting their eye, going to their eye doctor checks, pat smears, mammograms, and then they got, also got points for having normal waist measurements or normal blood pressure readings, normal cholesterol. So we were excited to introduce this program, 'cause it was an incentive for people to engage in healthier behaviors, and it really did work. We, in the middle of the year, we decided also to amp up our program and to get more buy-in with our WELL program. In fact, our program actually didn't have a name. We were City Wellness, and one of the things we thought we needed was branding. Our program needed branding, so we came up with the word WELL, which is working on wellness, and we branded the program and created a wellness committee that consists of several COSA employees from many departments, and we created the committee to get buy-in and to empower COSA employees who are excited about workplace wellness to help communicate our programs and get them, get their employees and the rest of the employees involved much more than we have had in the past, and we really did get a lot more involvement. But these wellness champions have created motivation with the Workplace Wellness Program, and they have really helped communicate all of our challenges and the fun activities that we're doing to try and get more employees engaging in healthy behaviors. One person who's not on here who has helped us tremendously is Anthony Wilson. He's been instrumental in communicating all of our challenges, sending out flowers, getting emails out to the employees to better communicate our programs that we're doing. One of the things, too, I wanted to talk about real quick is there's a company called WELLCOA, and it's Wellness Council of America, and they're the most respected resource for workplace wellness, and our hospital became members of WELLCOA this past year, and for the past 20 years, WELLCOA has dedicated its efforts to prom- And for the past 20 years, WELLCOA has dedicated its efforts to promote the efforts of America's healthiest companies. And part of what they have done is they established seven benchmarks to developing a results-oriented workplace wellness program. One of those benchmarks is creating a wellness committee among your organization. So that is what we did. And also what WELLCOA does is they provide, they're the ones who designate companies as well workplaces. And it is our goal this year to apply with WELLCOA to become a designated well workplace and eventually apply to become a well city. So one of the things we had to establish was developing a wellness committee so that we can apply for that designation as a well workplace. And that committee has worked very well, and we want to commend them for their efforts. We meet on a monthly basis, and they bring many ideas to us. One of the most recent ones was they wanted healthier vending options in the vending machines. So we took the idea to Daniel, who was very supportive. And we've been working with Carlo, the vending, to get healthier vending options in our vending machines. The other thing, too, that they brought to us is they wanted healthier options at the new employee orientations. Mary and I would go, we'd go to all the employee orientations, and we'd talk to them, new employees, about wellness. And right before our, our talk that we give, they have a donut break. So we stopped the donut break. And so it's the little things that matter to the employees, but they all add up to big things. So now we are serving, they, the city is serving healthier options at the new employee orientations, which we are proud of. But we would like to commend the committee because they've done tremendous work. And the supervisors have been so supportive in letting the committee members come and, and, and spend an hour of their day once a month to talk about workplace wellness and how we can elevate it to the next level and get more employees engaged and involved. And our chairperson on the committee is Morgan Chegwin, and she wanted to do a little presentation about the success of the program.
Just really briefly, y'all, I don't have a formal presentation, but I just wanted to speak to, from the, from the chairman, the champions' standpoint, that we're just so grateful for the council's continued support of the, the program. We achieved a 7% penetration in the figures that Cheryl was showing earlier, 7% penetration of all city employees that were employed at the time in last year, in our partial year. And so we hope to achieve in excess of 10% penetration this year. You saw that we have terrific support from fire and police and street and bridge. And so we just want to thank y'all for that. We have tremendous support from our wellness coordinators, Janet and Mary. They are really doing the, the yeoman's job on this and all of the work on it. And we're proud of the sponsorship and the, the relationship we have with Community Hospital because we don't know what we're doing. Janet and Mary, just tell us how to, how to get stuff started, and, and we get the word out. And it's, it's really, it had been huge for the morale. When you saw the 77 people up there that are participating, they have a, they're becoming our champions, too. And so you may see, you know, seven or eight people on our committee, but it's growing leaps and bounds, and, and we're just grateful for y'all's support of that.
One of the, we just met last week, our committee did. And one of the things they brought to us was they wanted anyone that participated in the WELL program to get, earn points for a day off. They would get a T-shirt, a WELL T-shirt, and get to wear that on Fridays. And we think that will help get the word out also because everybody's going to want to earn a WELL T-shirt and wear that on Fridays. So we're looking forward to implementing that. The next slide is going to show you the programs we did in 2014. And I'm just going to highlight on some of the most successful ones. The first one, everybody, New Year's resolution. We usually get a lot of people join our weight loss challenges. So we had a, a, it was called Get Lean in 2014. It was a weight loss challenge that we kicked off in January. We had 73 COSA people, 13 teams. They formulated teams, and they competed against each other. They lost a total of 330 pounds. And then we kicked off another challenge in the fall before the holidays hit. And we, we had 67 people participate, 13 teams. They lost 512 pounds. Our top winner in that challenge was a fireman who lost 39.7 pounds. Our third place winner in that challenge was a police officer, lost 24 and a half pounds. And then we did another challenge called Maintain, Don't Gain. And it was, it started in December, and it went through the middle of January and encouraged people not to gain weight over the holidays. We had, on that one, we had 42 people, and 18 of the participant, participants, or 43% actually lost weight over the Maintain, Don't Gain Challenge. And then all of the winners in our challenges are, win a one-year Health Club membership. So it's a big incentive for them to do it. And it's not just the, the top winner gets the one-year membership. It's the whole entire team. So the team that does the best, they all, every single member gets a one-year Health Club membership. And so it's, it's quite a positive thing, and employees love it, and they seem to love winning, winning the memberships. In 2015, we are amping up our programs even more. We're adding seven more programs to the, to the mix. We just finished our Jump Start Your Heart Challenge, and we had 44% of the people that did it had never done a challenge before. This was their first time participating in our WELL program. So we know that the word is getting out and that people, new people are coming on board because they're hearing their coworker, why aren't they here today? Well, they just earned their WELL day and just got their day off. So everybody wants to get on board and do the challenges. We are in the middle of our Way to Go Challenge. And this was the first challenge that we've done where we allowed them to invite a family member to participate. It's a, they formulate two-member teams so they could get their spouse or a family member to join them on this weight loss challenge. And they were very excited that it just wasn't limited to COSA employees, that they could, their family members could also participate. And we're getting ready to kick off for National Nutrition Month, which is just now. Yesterday, we kicked off our Get Your Plate and Shape Challenge. It's a 28-day challenge. And we found that through the wellness committee that they like both, usually our weight loss challenges are about eight weeks long, but they also like to do quick little short one-month challenges. So that's what this one is that we're doing. And then April 1st, in honor of National Walking Day, we put the word out. And we have seven COSA employees who have volunteered to lead walks on National Walking Day. And we will kick off our first walk at 6:00 a.m. at the ballpark on Bell Street. And they're, these are employees that have just volunteered their time to do this, to get people out walking that day. And we're proud that Daniel is going to lead a noon walk on that day from City Hall. So we appreciate his support. And we're going to end the day at the KOA at 6:00 p.m., where all the employees are invited to bring their family members, their pets, their kids for a final walk at 6:00 p.m. on that day. So we've got some great programs planned for 2015. We're very excited about that. And I think Mary wants to say a few words also.
The only thing with this chart, I was going to show y'all that you do see some peaks in it, but this does show where the participation, this is basically our portal, our wellness portal. And you'll see those peaks in, I believe it's 2013. And that's because during those peaks, that's when we were having our screenings. So employees were going online to fill in their health risk assessment questionnaire. And once again, in 2014, you see a really big peak. But what, what I want y'all to take note of is the, later in the year, as you see, we're going down to 79 hits and 50 hits and, and 19 hits. This report was run in, on March 6th, and we had already 19 hits in March. So more and more employees are visiting the website, and they're documenting their activities. So that's just what this, this chart is representing. And then as far as our overview, we are trying our hardest to track these high-risk employees. A lot of them have hypertension, but they also have metabolic syndrome, which may be just a weight issue. They may have diabetes or elevated cholesterol. We have also identified some with, some gentlemen with elevated PSAs. We have been able to get those into primary care physicians if they've never been tracked before. And we're also being able to see some good results with lowering of A1Cs for their diabetes. And once again, we are working on the blood pressure this year. So we are going to be doing some rescreenings when we go out to different departments to educate them on their, how to, how to track their wellness points.
One thing I forgot to mention, too, with our WELL program, in an effort to try to communicate, over the next few months, Mary and I and the members of the wellness committee are going out and doing site visits. So at all of the department meetings, we are going to be visiting with them about the WELL program, how they can get involved and how they can start earning free days off because it's much easier than they really realize. We, we are really just want to let you know how successful the WELL, WELL program has been. We, we had successful completion of 13 challenges in 2014. We're going to be doing 19 more in 2015. Our online usage has increased, as Mary suggested, and our wellness committee has been highly successful. We also have been one of the three municipalities that has been asked to speak at the statewide Texas Health Human Resources Conference in April in Austin, Texas. And we will be one of the three municipalities presenting our WELL program. So it is getting buzz around the state level, and we are going to be excited to share with other municipalities about the things that we've done and the programs that we've done that have been successful, where they may want to duplicate our success. And as mentioned earlier, we are excited to be partnering with WELLCOA so that we can take all the great things that we've done with our WELL program and apply for a well workplace designation. And then in hopes after that, we receive that designation, we will be looking to apply for well city designation. So we are very excited about that. Oh, and Cheryl, she wanted to wrap this up. And then we wanted to also share a cute little video with you at the end.
Okay, this will, this will be quick with our recommendations. All of this is to show you that there really is a difference if people participate in their, in their wellness and their health. And you all have made wonderful, wonderful strides to make this a city thing. And I think you can see from city activities that are happening, happening with other businesses in town and also with other activities in town, you really have made a precedence. Four years ago, this was not a popular option. And so I think y'all have made a really, really nice inroad for our city to be, become healthier. Some of the considerations that we would like to plant the idea and have you consider maybe for 2016 would be to watch the voluntary participation. We expect that to go up by 10% at least this next time, maybe it'll double. We, we hope that it very much will. In, in addition to that, there can be other programs that we've seen around the nation that you have an incentive on a positive side with premium incentives, if you watch maybe four pillars of health, and that being a BMI, being non-smokers, being compliance with medication, annual visits to the doctors. So you can have, you can have, and preventative screenings, you can have things that come off of your insurance in a very positive way with a premium incentive for each of those things. So that's something to consider for 2016, just to ramp up the program a little bit more. I think the, the intent of this program all along was to watch people's health get better and to have an effect on, on the insurance. So that's our, our program for today. If y'all have any questions, that'd be great. And we have a 60-second video. You have any questions?
Questions?
No, I'm just glad we're doing it because I know that when I've kind of been on a weight loss program, it was a lot easier doing it with people that I worked with because every, you're kind of on the same schedule. It was a lot harder when I got home and had cooking and laundry and all those other duties. So it, it makes perfect sense to me. I'm glad we've got those participating and hope we get more.
And I, I'm, I'm very proud of the fact that you really approach this in such an innovative way to really inspire the staff to get into good health. I think that's something that, again, when you start looking at the WELL program, that that really has had a pretty good impact. And I thank y'all also for coming in with your ideas and, of course, just working together. Thank you for everything you do for us.
I'm sure Daniel can also make sure that the council lunches are more healthy than they generally are. So I'll, I'll look forward to that. Your presence here has probably encouraged that.
We could put that on the agenda. Okay. Well, we do thank you.
No chicken.
Y'all are really making a difference in San Angelo with setting a, setting the bar. And that's very important. Thank you.
One of the things when we go out to the site visits and meet with the departments to talk to them about the WELL program, we put together a little cute video to share with them when we go to the department meetings. We find that if this stuff isn't fun, people aren't going to do it. And so with the help of Anthony Wilson, he put together a little video for us that we can show when we go out to the site visits and meet with the departments to explain to them about the WELL program. And you may ask us, why was it important to implement a WELL program? We found that before, people were just going through the motions. They were showing up for their annual screenings, and they were doing those. But then we went, we wouldn't hear from them or see them again till the next annual screening. And by implementing the WELL program, it has given them, them the incentive to focus on their health on a regular basis, go into the online portal and log the healthy behaviors that they are doing. And it just brings focus and more motivation to the program, and people have really had fun with doing it. And so we wanted to share this little video with you that we will be sharing with employees. Come in.
Janet, I finished my workout, and according to my calculations, I've earned 57 extra seconds of vacation time this year, just 937 more workout hours to go, and I get a full two days off.
Wow, I'm so proud of you, Anthony. But it really doesn't have to be that hard to earn WELL points. Simply just doing your health risk assessment, getting your teeth cleaned, having your annual flu shot, and walking 60 minutes a week quickly earns you WELL points. In no time, you could earn a day off just by getting 400 WELL points. It doesn't take that long.
So I know I go to sawellness.com to do that, but what for, what about my colleagues who don't have a computer?
Oh, well, we simply, we have this handy-dandy log form. They can log all of their activities on here, and it adds up quite quickly. And they can just turn this into the wellness coordinators, Mary and myself.
SAWellness.com.
So anyway, our point being to the employees, it doesn't have to be that hard to earn these days, days off. We want to encourage them to participate in the program and get credit for the efforts that they're putting forth. We thank you for your time. Any other questions?
Can we get a video of the mayor doing that? That's my, yeah.
Yes, please let me do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, that ought to take us to lunchtime and executive. Let me read the executive. Executive, number E, executive session under Division of Government Code Title V, Open Government Epic, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions, to requirement that meetings be open under the following sections. Section 551072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property regarding number A, potential sites for a police department administration building, number B, real property located in the San Angelo Regional Airport, and number C, the Avenue P Stormwater Drainage Project, it is 1223. I'm taking us into executive. Meeting has been called back to order. We will now continue on our agenda with number 16, which is a public hearing in consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the adoption of the 215 through 2020 capital improvement plan for the city of San Angelo. Ms. Chegwin, you are on, ma'am.
Hello. Just to give you a brief of, of course, what's brought us to today, we talked last- Just to give you a brief of, of course, what's brought us to today, we talked last meeting about the CIP process, but what's before you today is adoption of the resolution. And, of course, this is not necessarily, this is not allocating funds to the projects, but just endorsing that the plan is compliant and is a tool needed for upcoming budget discussions. As promised, we did have some additional online submissions. As I stated, we're leaving that online forum open live throughout the fiscal year, and so, we did have seven more as of background deadline, but we've had about six more since then, mostly in support of animal shelter improvements. So, we're continuing to gather those. That'll be good information as we have future discussions about budget adoption and allocation of funds, and so, we're keeping a log of that, and we'll continue to do so. And with that, what I have is a list of each of the projects, but barring any specific questions, I mean, I'm available for that, but I think a better use of our time might be if you all have any questions at this time.
Questions?
Can you put a green check mark in front of the first one?
I will do my best.
Okay. That's all I ask.
And with that, that's, the resolution is before you. It includes all the projects as discussed last time, and then, I think we added a couple of projects as a result of the public forums. We had folks bring up some valid things that we should consider. They weren't included originally because of funding, but this certainly should be pure and independent of funding and simply a planning tool of what we know is on the horizon for our big needs.
And the restrooms at the parks are in there, they're in a high priority?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good.
How well were those attended?
I think there was, what, three or four at the Lakeview one?
The Lakeview, we had five citizens, and they went here downtown, where five, one individual attended both, so a total of nine individuals attended. Not all spoke.
But part of that was because of weather, wasn't it?
The one at Lincoln was an ice day. But we're also seeing that, you know, we're a Facebook town, and people are online, and people are busy, and if they have a five-minute way to let us know what they're thinking, they're taking advantage of that. So, although we had poor attendance at the public meetings, we had over 100 submissions online. And that's, I mean, way more than we've ever experienced in the past. So, we'll continue to grow that and leave that open as a tool.
Elizabeth?
Morgan, last night at my neighborhood meeting, we took up the issue and looked at what the council had worked on in the planning session, and citizens had a chance to add to that, but generally speaking, we just kind of ranked what the council had addressed. And by far, there was more support for the police administration building than anything. I don't know if that would surprise you. Foster Communication Coliseum Expansion and Remodel was number two. The third item was restroom facilities in our neighborhood parks. And the, is that the fourth item, fourth most popular item, was Downtown Streetscape Master Plan? And then, kind of, I guess, the outlier for the fifth most supported project was a new nature center. We kind of went through the same process that staff put us through with, here's a myriad of projects, what do you want to keep in play? And then, with that, we ranked the highest, we took the highest six, and there was clearly a distinction between the top five and that sixth project. So, anyway, it was good to see that there was some consistency. The only peculiar one, again, was the idea of the new nature center, which may be more relevant in the future if the lake master planning effort has a higher and better use for that.
And we did move that out to future years in anticipation of that. But yeah, that's what we're seeing again and again in the online submissions, is that we're, there's a consensus out there for supporting these projects, but we'll add this to the file as well.
And some of those people acted as if they hadn't seen any other opportunity for input, and I know that's hard, and I don't have the answer at all. I think Facebook is probably a good venue, or on the city's website, it's all the same. But, you know, wherever people are, maybe we go to them in the future. You know, sometimes you can do it at the mall, have a day at the mall, like a kiosk, and you get all sorts of engagement. So, I'm glad we're on Facebook, because as you say, that's where everybody is.
I would agree with you, that I'm bragging that we've had 100 submissions online.
It's more we've ever had.
In a population of, you know, 90,000-plus, that's not a lot of market penetration. So, it's good, but we recognize that our work is not done.
Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, first of all, Elizabeth, even on, Elizabeth, nobody mentioned, none of the folks mentioned streets in the conversation? I'm surprised. I mean, our streets.
Well, we kind of prefaced it with the idea that there are other funding sources being discussed, so these are the, these are sort of the unfunded, competing-for-general Fund projects. I think if we ask them about streets, streets are going to be a high priority, water's going to be a high priority, but we talk about that all the time.
Morgan, now, my request was go back some, a couple of slides and show the capital improvement plan. You went a little too fast.
We've got, I've got every single project listed. I didn't go through each of those specifically, but we certainly can.
But I just, I just want the folks, they'll be watching this on TV, to notice what they are. So, it just went a little bit too fast for me, so I would imagine it'd be kind of fast for them.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
Any further comments on this? Somebody want to move to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion to approve as presented? Do you have a second public input on this? Further counsel input?
Johnny.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Put a 6-0 on it. Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you.
Number 17, discussion and possible action related to the Police Department Memorial Sculpture. A, presentation and/or update on the proposed design fundraising efforts and current fund balance. B, authorization to execute professional services agreement with Raul R. Ruiz for creation, sculpting, and completion of the sculpture and substantially the attached form for an amount not to exceed $100,000. Assistant Chief Jeff Phant, you have the floor, sir.
All right, I'm going to make this short, sweet, and to the point. This is kind of an update from what we did in, I think, August 20 of 2013. We basically came through counsel and presented the idea of the police memorial sculpture. Chief Vasquez has been working with Raul Ruiz to design a mock-up, I guess, basically, of what the sculpture would be, and they had selected him as the original artist or sculptor that would be able to do this project. To date, they've been raising money. There was a certain amount of money that has been carried over from year to year to year to year for this project. The Police Officers Association has been gathering money, they've been getting donations, and they're going to pool this money to build this sculpture. So, basically, to this, to date, we have just over $55,000 available to start the project. From my understanding, it will take approximately one year from the date that we agreed to start this, for him to be ready to install or to complete the project from this point forward. So, basically, what we're here to do today is, we wanted to give you an update that how much money is available. We wanted to go ahead and ask if we could execute the agreement with the, an official agreement, the contract with the artist, and also to ask for authorization to begin the project and let him go ahead and do some of the initial stages, up to the point that we've got funds available. And then, through that time, the chief said he is going to continue the fundraising efforts, and obviously, we wouldn't be able to complete, install it, put it on the property or whatever, and until we have those funds available. He believes that he can have that within a year. As we get through the project and we get exposure, we believe that, you know, that we'll be able to raise additional funds throughout the year to maintain the, to finish the project.
And Raul is comfortable with that approach?
I believe he is.
And are you building this so you can move it?
It better be.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would hope that maybe, we might even want to delay the install instead of having to move it, you know, depending on what happens, you know? Hopefully, we'll be able to say.
We hope we'll have a reason to move it, of course.
Mayor, if I may, I was in conversation, Charlotte, were you first?
Go ahead.
As I recall, the funding amount that was approved was $25,000, and that was before my time, but I'm going to have to ask Michael to refresh my memory as to how that $25,000 has carried over year to year to year to year to year and not been converted back to the general fund. Refresh my memory as to how that was established? Or somebody?
The monies were restricted, and so, they were carried over for that restricted purpose.
Restricted purpose. And where did the monies come from?
The original. Pardon me?
The $25,000.
Are you telling me you know, or you don't know?
Council allocated $35,000 in 2014.
Council allocation in a previous year.
Previous, okay. That's, just wanted to bring up to date on that, and it is movable.
It was $35,000, Charlotte, that's what they're, that's what they mentioned.
Further questions?
My comment was, I did visit with, had lunch with Rusty Herndon and Raul Ruiz, and I think the crux of all this was, we have funding in place to at least get the project off and running, because it's going to take three phases. Phase one, I think he's got the mock-up, and he would, you know, move it over to phase two, where they get it bronzed, or whatever he does, takes it to the refinery, to the, what do you call those places?
The foundry.
The foundry.
From what I understand, it takes a considerable amount of time to be able to get it to the foundry, and then, smooth it all up. I'm not an artist.
And I think, and I think, like you're saying, that one month, one year would be around that, is it National Police Week of next year that they want to?
That would be great, if we could have it done.
I think that was the idea, that it would take at least that long to get it, the finished product, right in, right before that special event that's going to happen here in San Angelo anyway.
Are you in favor, John?
I am very much.
Make a move.
I moved to approve.
Wait, wait, wait.
No, no.
I got a deal, too.
Okay, Don.
There could be an issue with issuing a PO for less than the contract amount, so we may need to look at options for how we, for how we either construct the contract, or we could also alternatively budget for both the revenue donation and the expense, but that would be, you know, coming upon the project manager to monitor that they don't expand beyond the revenue, so.
Can you fix that?
Can you fix that?
Yes, we'll work with Chief Phant.
Okay, Don?
Okay, I'm totally confused about $35,000, Michael. What are you talking about? Are you holding part of their monies are, what was that all about?
That goes way back to when city manager Tom Adams was here. There was an agenda item that came forward to move, I think the original amount came from contribution funds that were unrestricted, were not dedicated to a particular purpose. And they got, we were looking for a funding source for an amount of money, and we identified that, and I think council directed that that be dedicated for that purpose.
Okay, so, he's, he only has to raise $65,000, then?
There's $55,000.
There's, he has $1,600 in that account. And then, I guess he must have additional monies.
Right. The Police Officers Association has an additional $15,000 or $14,000 and some change there. Adding those two together makes a total available to start of just over $55,000.
Okay, so, what is the $35,000? Is that their money, or is that city money?
It's city money.
Okay.
But it's restricted for this purpose.
It's a part of the 55, is what you're asking. The 35 is part of the 55.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
That's correct.
All right, that's all I need.
That is correct, I'm sorry, I was unclear on that.
Yeah, the figures weren't adding up until.
I wish we had $85,000 left.
See, that's, yeah, okay.
$90.
Anybody else? Any other questions? John?
I moved to approve this item as presented with Tina making the adjustments that she needs to make. Does that make sense? Okay.
Somebody going second? Second. Any further comment? Public comment? Motion has been made and seconded that we approve this, so that they can begin the, begin the process. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Put a 6-0 on that one, please. And we have now moved to number 18. Thank you, Jeff. Consideration of public action on matters discussed in executive closed session if needed, and there were two of them. Dan, what was our first one, the airport?
I'm going to just send this out.
The first one was potential, the first one was potential sites for a police department administration building. Dan, would you give me the correct legalese on this?
Yes, let me open up my email message. Just one moment. I just sent that out. Where's my email on here? I got a, I sent it to my, I didn't send it to myself, though. I sent it to you.
He's a thinking man, not a technology man.
I haven't gotten it yet. I'd probably just written it on my big chief tablet.
The first motion relates to the airport property that was discussed in executive session.
Is that the one we're going to do first? We're doing police station.
Okay, we'll do police station first, discussed in executive session. A motion to authorize and direct the city manager to address a letter of intent to First Financial Bank at San Angelo for the proposed purchase of certain real property and commercial building located at 301 West Beauregard Avenue and 338 West Tuig Avenue, and to negotiate a real estate purchase agreement subject to conditions precedent for purchase of the property for a price not to exceed $1,585,649.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
I will accept that motion, and I'll accept your second.
Where's the money coming from? Where's the money coming from, Tina?
The money for the initial purchase will be budgeted in a budget amendment that we will bring to counsel. If the scope of the project expands, it could alter how we fund the project.
Do have a motion on the floor, and a second that we purchased the First Financial Bank building for a possible location of the police department, which is one of our top priorities.
It's a motion only for the letter of intent and authorization to negotiate a contract on condition, and that contract will be brought back to council.
Okay. All right, I'm not going to say another word. All, public comment on this item? Further comment from counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Put a 6-0 on that one. Now, let me go back and read the other one. A real property located at San Angelo Regional Airport. Mr. Dan, please give me one on that.
I'm going to read it for him. Motion to direct staff to propose and publish an RFP, RFB, for a month-to-month lease of a hangar and certain real property located at 8534 Hangar Road, San Angelo Regional Airport, Mathis Field.
Does that cover a bid? Yeah. RFP bid, all right, okay. Move to approve?
Marty got me, you on a second? Okay, I do have an approval, a motion to approve by Marty. I do have a second by Charlotte. Do I have any further discussion on this? Public input on this? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Drop a 6-0 on that one. And the third item, which was Avenue P Stormwater Drainage Project, there is no action to be taken at this time. That was merely for discussion and for information. Moving on, number 19, consideration of approving various board nominations by council and designated council members. A, Development Cooperation, Richard Crisp, SMD 5 to 1, to a first full-year term, February 2017. B, Airport Advisory Board, Robert Frank, SMD 5, to an unexpired term, October 2017. Construction Board, Roger Julian, SMD 2, to a second full-term, February 2017. Casey Deering, SMD 3, to a second full-term, February 2017. Christopher Garros, SMD 4, to a second full-term, February 2017. Tanner Colster, Mayor, to a first full-term, February 2017. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Do have a motion. Charlotte, I do have a second from Marty. Any counsel discussion on this? Any public comment on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Drop a 6-0 on that one. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Start with you, Elizabeth.
Nothing right now, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Don?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes, back in October of last year...
Yes, back in October of last year, I believe it was October, we approved a new boat dock out of the lake, and with the boat races coming, I just would like an update or a status. Friday packet is fine as to where we are on getting that completed, started and completed. And I've already beat Shane up on the trash from the top of the loop to the west, all the way to Southwest Boulevard is, needs serious attention. That's it.
Johnny?
No, sir.
Marty?
No.
How about Rodney, does he have anything?
He's still quiet.
Okay. I have nothing either. So I will now ask for some help for number 21, which is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
1:49, and we are through. Mr. Bryan?